Madam City Clerk?
Okay.
Welcome, everyone, to the San Rafael City Council meeting. Today is Monday, April 15th, which we all know because it is Tax Day. I'll request the City Clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Maria Enscolari.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. We met in closed session. I'll turn to the City Attorney, Epstein, for a report out, please.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
Thank you. We have a fantastic meeting on deck tonight. So as always, I like to start by thanking the staff who keep this city running so beautifully every single day, out on our streets as well as within the halls of City Hall. So thank you. We very much appreciate you. Because our agenda is so full, and if you've attended a council meeting, you know we like to include a land acknowledgement as part of our opening. So in addition to this statement, the city collaborates with the tribe over our shared interests. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Mewoc people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. And we honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all. Welcome. We're glad you're here. I'll turn to the City Clerk to describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that tonight's meeting will include Spanish-language simultaneous and consecutive interpretation provided by qualified interpreters on the Spanish channel. If watching on Zoom, you can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in the toolbar. And if you're attending in person and don't have access to the Zoom meeting from your phone, you can see me and I'll get you set up with a device so that you can listen to the meeting in Spanish. As a reminder, we ask that everyone participating tonight, please speak slowly to allow our interpreters to effectively express their comments.
Muchas gracias, Councilwoman Kate. Antes de comenzar, me gustaría anunciar que la reunión de esta noche incluirá interpretación simultánea y consecutiva en español proporcionada por intérpretes calificados en el canal de español. Si está participando por medio de Zoom, puede unirse al canal en español haciendo clic en el icono de interpretación en la barra de herramientas. Y si está asistiendo en persona y no tiene acceso a la reunión de Zoom desde su teléfono, venga a verme y le configuraré un dispositivo para que pueda escuchar la reunión en español. Como recordatorio, pedimos que todos los participantes de esta noche hablen lentamente para permitir que nuestros intérpretes expresen sus comentarios de manera efectiva. Gracias.
Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public wishing to provide public comment displayed on the podium. And the projector is a timer to help you stay within your two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though you're not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. You can select "Live Transcript" button to enable this feature. And if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanrefel.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We'll start with our City Manager and Council reports. I'll turn to the City Manager, Christine Alavide.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and the community. Just a couple of quick announcements. One, I just wanted to remind everyone that the next Police Accountability and Advisory Committee is this Wednesday, the 17th, at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers. You can participate in person or watch the meeting via Zoom. We also have some really great Earth Day events this year that I just wanted to highlight. On Saturday, the 20th, at Pickleweed Park, from 10 to noon, there's a cleanup. The meetup is at Shoreline Pathway, near the Tuscany Marsh sign just past Pickleweed Park. Our annual Downtown Clean and Green Shop Local for Earth Day, that's a monthful, on April 22nd is from 10 to noon at the City Plaza at 1,004th Street. And then we have a special Climate Change Action Plan Community Forum with a panel on workforce development for climate action on April 23rd from 5:00 to 6:30, afraid I'm talking too fast, at the Transportation Authority of Marin at 905th Avenue. You can check the city's webpage for more details on that, and so I hope.
Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues, Vice Mayor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have three items to report out on. This is going back last month because I missed a meeting. With Mayor Kate, I attended the Fair Hills Annual Meeting at Falkirk Cultural Center. It was great to meet with the Fair Hills neighborhood. We examined a range of topics. On Wednesday, March 27th, at the Marin County Council, mayors and council members received a presentation from MCE. And on Thursday, April 4th, attended with Mayor Kate the Finance Subcommittee meeting where we received updates around the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
No updates at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Two items to report on. I attended a meeting of the Marin Transit Board last Monday. It was a short meeting. We approved a pilot project for West Marin, which we were able to get out early so we could get back here in time for the eclipse event. The next day was a Central Marine Sanitation Agency Board meeting. We approved a budget for the design of a nutrient removal program, which will be our second-biggest new facility ever, probably in the $50 million range. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuren Enscolari.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Attended on April 10th, a board meeting for Marin Can. Marin Can is a nonprofit that was launched to address climate change through collective action, and is short for Marine Climate Action. I've been a board member for two years, and in May will be my last meeting. So maybe one of my fellow council members would like to join Marin Can. So I'll put it out there as an elected official. And then I will finish by mentioning I attended the memorial celebration of life for Olivia Beltran on Saturday. The city of San Rafael had a proclamation for her and her family, and it was very well-attended, and it's just very moving to see how the community responds and what a great influence it was. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a few items as well. I'm your representative on SMART, the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit Board. In March of 2024, ridership was 31% higher than 2023, so the numbers continued to improve. SMART held a series of strategic workshops, and they were very well-attended. And now staff will be doing the community outreach, April through August, saying, "This is what we heard. Did we get it right?" As of April 1st, all youth ages 18 and under, as well as seniors defined as 65 years and older, will be able to ride free on SMART. So the details are on the website. SMART has started up the Giants. If you're a Giants fan, they have started their service that coincides with the ferry schedule. So you can take SMART to Larkspur and then take the ferry and go watch the Giants win, we hope. Also at the meeting, one of the key agenda items, we discussed the feasibility and timing of a future tax measure. Very robust discussion about that, as SMART is funded by a sales tax that was voter-approved. So more to come on that. In addition, I am a representative on the Transportation Authority of Marin, and I'm part of the Administration, Projects, and Planning Executive Committee meeting. Two things to report. One, Bike to Work Day, May 16th. I know you have some time, but just heard the date, so be sure to mark your calendar if you are commuting by bicycle. And then we also had a discussion about the Bellum Boulevard Off-Ramp Improvement Program. And I know we have Tam here this evening to talk about 580101. The last two things I'll mention, we held our B-PAC Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We're getting ready to do a slight refresh of our B-PAC master plan, so the discussion was around that. And then finally, I had the honor of being interviewed by CBS Sunday Morning, which is a national program around the upcoming Grants Pass case that the Supreme Court will be hearing. It will be airing on April 21st, this Sunday, so we shall see how I did on camera. But it was nice that they came to talk to San Rafael and to hear the great things that we're doing here. So as always, thank you to my colleagues for all that you do off the dais as well. I will take public comment on either of the City Manager or Councilmember reports. So this is public comment on just our reports. Not seeing any, I'm going to close the public comment. Turn to the consent agenda. I will be polling item for H. Are there any other items that my colleagues would like to poll? Not seeing any. Are there any comments from the public on the consent agenda for A through F? Should I take comments on the whole consent calendar, Madam City Clerk?
You may, or you can have public comments for G separately.
Okay. So it's H, isn't it? Okay. So what we'll do is I will take comments from the public on items 4A through 4F. Well, G was polled from the... So, okay, 4A through 4F. So if you have any comments on 4A through 4F? Not seeing any. Vice Mayor Hill.
Yeah, I move that we approve items 4A through 4F with one amendment to 4E. There's a typo on a date referencing July 20th, and the farmer's market schedule should read June 20th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved to the second in 4A through 4F. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Maria Enscolari.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. I polled the consent item for H, which is the Public Art Project Proposal for mural at Albert J. Borro Community Center. I'm thrilled that we have former Vice Chair Laurel Ross from the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. But before I invite you to speak, I'll ask if staff wants to say a few words, and then Laurel, if you wouldn't, after they say a few words. Welcome, Craig.
Hi, everyone. Mayor Kate, Council. It's great to see you. My name is Craig Verame. I'm the Assistant Library and Recreation Director. And I also serve as the staff liaison for the Public Art Review Board, which is why I'm here today. I just wanted to share a couple of quick notes before we turn it over for comments. As you all know, the city of San Rafael celebrates public art. In 2017, the city was named a California Cultural Arts District along with 13 other cities, receiving some CAC funding for the downtown San Rafael Art District. There's dozens of local arts and culture organizations. And in continuing with this celebration of art, the city adopted the Public Art Review Board in 2022, which is new. And we're excited that this board is helping the city to review public art. This is a special moment because this is the first long-term public art proposal that we've brought to you, the City Council, for review. And so we just wanted to acknowledge this moment as the first time that a long-term, which is longer than one-year, proposal is coming your way. So thank you so much for taking a look, and I'm going to turn it over for comments at this point.
Thank you. I'll invite Laurel Ross to come up and speak before we open public comment. Thank you for making the trip down from Santa Rosa. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you. I'm here today, Laurel Ross, and as the Emeritus Vice Chair, having served on tribal council for the last 28 years and now in a capacity of a formal representative. I am joined here with Councilmember Matt Johnson as well, who is able to attend. Both Matt and I are direct descendants of Coast Mewoc people. Both of our families, actually, were taken to the Mission San Rafael, so our legacy is deeply rooted in this city. Today, we're here to share space with you all and with the community of the city of San Rafael about an exciting project of the mural that will be over in the Canal Arts District. Our tribe and tribal council were able to review and speak with the artist Oscar Morales, who has made a beautiful vision of combining indigenous people of not just our families and ancestors, but also of the indigenous community that is largely represented in the canal area. That said, we have partnered with the Canal Arts folks, with Rich and with Brian, who have been really incredible support and advocates for indigenous people, not just the Coast Mewoc people, our tribe, but also for the families and the multi-generations that make up our neighbors, make up our friends, and really bring the heart to this community. We hope that art will always be bringing people together. I know in our culture, art has been something that unites not just our stories, our generations, but the teaching and values of reciprocity, of belonging, and remembering where we come from. May this image serve and represent the continuity of San Rafael being home to many over time. The representation that you'll see in the mural specifically is uniting our ancestors. Juana Baptista, who is one of our oldest surviving ancestors, that was directly here in San Rafael. And we have many people who are direct descendants of her, and the continuity of our generation being represented here on our ancestral lands as the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. It's important to remember, especially in these times where there's big issues about homelessness and big issues about housing, to remember that these images remind us of our humanity, remind us of a sense of place and belonging. And I hope that this image will remain in our minds and hearts and create that safe space for generations to come, as this place has always been home to the Coast Mewoc people. And I applaud and thank you, Mayor Kate, and City Council, for creating support and space in the community to recognize the indigenous people of yesterday, today, and tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, would you like to say anything?
Sure. Thank you. I'll keep it very brief. I'm just very honored to be here today. I started out meeting as a representative from the tribe on this project as a tribal citizen and a staff member in our Cultural Resources Department. And just recently, in the past two months, I was appointed to our tribal council. And I have the virtually impossible task of trying to fill Laurel's shoes as an advocate and liaison between some of these projects we're working on in our ancestral homelands, carrying those forward to the council. And I'm really happy to be here today to represent the council and show my support for this wonderful project. We just now had the amazing opportunity to join Rich and Brian on a walk to see where the mural was, as well as the ongoing projects throughout the trails on the canal. And I'm really, really looking forward to providing opportunities for our tribal people to reengage with their homelands in Marin counties. Thank you for having us here.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming down and for your comments. I will open up public comment on this item. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to it, now's your chance. Come on down, Mr. Storick.
Mayor Kate and members of the council and city staff, I am Rich Storick. I'm here representing the Canal Arts nonprofit. But I'm also here on behalf of the arts in San Rafael. The importance of, the power of, the need of, the lack of, and the potential for the arts in San Rafael. It's my mission. It's a thing of the spirit, as you know. It's a, it's a thing of the spirit, as you know. And you, you feel it. You, you understand it when you see it. But it's also a powerful economic engine, as many cities have discovered. About three years ago, I had meetings with then-Vice Mayor Kate and Assistant City Manager Christine, talking about the arts in San Rafael, what could be done to improve things. San Rafael is behind many cities in its public arts programs. And we agreed that there were things to be done. The example I used at the time, as I recall, was a picture of what could have become the Golden Gate Bridge as originally designed by the engineer Strauss, we all know. And the ultimate result, which is this beautiful icon that's a worldwide work of art, that was influenced and designed by an architect and artist in San Francisco. Very few people know about this. His name was Irving Morrow, a name to remember. That was an example, I thought, of great public art, something that could be done, has been done. Working with my mentor, Meg Riley, who's the head of Marin Society of Artists, and then that's the oldest arts organization in Marin County, on the arts elements for the 2040 Plan. And then later, working with the Canal Alliance on designing and improvements to their quarters.
Thank you, Rich. If you could wrap up, please.
Pardon me?
If you could wrap up, your time is up.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, that's okay. Let me finish your thought.
I wanted to say that this project, this Borro mural, which the city is accepting as a, as a gift from the Canal Arts, is something that is a momentous step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your advocacy and your leadership. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Welcome.
Hola, muy buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Marina Palma y soy una voluntaria comunitaria. Yo de verdad estoy muy pero muy contenta que finalmente vamos a tener este mural en la comunidad. Este mural no solo une las culturas de la tribu Mewoc, pero va a mantener el historial, el que nosotros hemos venido ocupando en la comunidad de Canal. Ese color, los colores tan vivos que van a poner, lo espiritual que va a significar, a una gran ayuda para la salud mental de todas nuestras familias, porque todos creemos en la cultura, cultura, colores, culturas espirituales. Yo estoy muy agradecida con todos ustedes por aprobar este mural que graciosamente el señor Rich Storick nos ha ofrecido. Muchas gracias.
Yeah, gracias, Marina. So wait a moment, we're gonna have the interpretation.
All right. I'm sorry, one second, please. I'm sorry, she was very quick. So she was saying that, her name is Marina, and she is here to appreciate the mural that was from the Mewoc tribe, but it unites the tribes there. It also shows the history of the canal community with its bright colors. We all believe in this culture. We're very appreciative of this thing that Richard Storick has given us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Would you want to comment? Okay, welcome.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Irene De León y estoy aquí también para apoyar el mural que se va a realizar en el canal. Porque pienso que el arte realmente es muy importante para pequeños y grandes. Nos ayuda mucho al desenvolvimiento en los estudios, también en nuestra vida diaria, y sé de la necesidad que tiene nuestra comunidad de ver nuestra trascendencia. El mural representa la emigración, este país conformado por muchos inmigrantes y mucha ideología. Entonces estoy muy agradecida porque den la oportunidad que exista este mural. Y también a Rich Storick, porque él es el representante de Canal Arts y ha visto también la necesidad que tenemos de tener arte también en la comunidad. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, this is Irene De León. We are very grateful to be part of this, both big and small. This is helpful for the development of people who are going to school and also in our daily lives. The community needs this. It's transcendental. It represents immigration, of the, of the many immigrants coming to this country. We are very grateful for this. And again, grateful to Rich Storick.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Not seen any, I'll close with public comment. And again, thank you so much to Emeritus Vice Chair Laurel Ross for coming down here and new tribal council member Matt Johnson. We appreciate the partnership and look forward to more meetings where we're talking about art, as well as other issues that we have in common. So thank you. With that, I will turn to Councilmember Micah for a motion, please.
Well, I am so excited to, today is World Art Day by UNESCO, a celebration to promote the development, diffusion, and enjoyment of art. Art nurtures creativity, innovation, and cultural diversity for all peoples across the globe and plays an important role in sharing knowledge and encouraging curiosity and dialogue. So I couldn't think of a better day to actually approve this. And I am so thankful to have all of you and so many representatives of the canal tonight as well. So with that, I will make a motion. I apologize for the length of the motion.
No, we appreciate that. Thank you. I'll second. It has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yedens Gladi, could you repeat your motion? Sorry, you need to say what you're.
Okay, so I'll make a motion approving and authorizing the city manager to, wait, no. I'm on the last one.
Next one.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Approve the Canal Arts Public Art Proposal to paint a mural on the exterior of the Albert J. Borro Community Center and authorize the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Rich Storick, DBA the Canal Arts.
I'll second. Moved in second and roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedens Gladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much.
If I may, Mayor Kate, I'm going to toggle our interpreters.
Okay. We will take a moment for that to happen. And while she's switching out the interpreters, so we'll just wait a moment.
Pedro, you're welcome to mute for now.
The next item, are we ready? On our agenda is a special presentation. We take public comment prior to special presentations. Today, the special presentation is with TAM, the Transportation Authority of Marin, giving the council an update on the 101 580 multimodal and local access improvement project. Now, there are many people in this room interested. Welcome. I see Director Ann Richmond is here.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Kate, councilmembers.
Actually, hold on one second. Let me take public comment on it first. I was introducing you. And I know it seems strange to give public comment before you hear it, but that's the way it is this evening. And of course, if you, after she makes the presentation, if you do have comments, because this is not a decision item, feel free to email the council or the city clerk with any input or questions that you may have on this item. Not seen any public comment? Now I will turn to you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate, councilmembers and everyone. Thank you for inviting us to provide an update on the 101 580 multimodal and local access improvement project. My name is Ann Richmond. I'm the Executive Director of the Transportation Authority of Marin. And with me is Connie Frimir and other members of the project team, Dan Cheryer and Molly Graham. The 101 580 project is one of the biggest projects that TAM is involved with. And since we were last here in 2022, we have been doing extensive planning and community engagement work. So tonight, we will provide an update on the status and recent project activities, including recent actions taken by the TAM Board of Commissioners to streamline the environmental process and to incorporate local feedback. So with that, I'll turn it over to Connie for the presentation, and we have the team available if there are questions. Thank you.
Okay, let me get situated here for a second. So I know how this works. All right. Thanks, Ann, for the introduction and good evening to you, mayor and councilmembers. Happy to be here tonight. So I'm going to give you a little bit of an update on the project. As Ann mentioned, we were here a little while, you know, it's been a little while since we've been here. We're going to talk a little bit about the status of the alternatives for this project and the recent TAM board action on March 28th, including a new alternative, the Bellum Boulevard corridor improvements. We'll give you a little background on that. And also, the Bellum off-ramp project, which is separate from the 101 580 connector project. So with that, our project, the project's goals and objectives, I'm just going to quickly review these. You should have seen these before. But it's to enhance circulation on the local streets by separating regional and local traffic, enhancing the active transportation network, including bicycles, pedestrians, and transit in the project area, enhancing bicycle and pedestrian safety in the project area, improving connectivity between northbound US 101 and eastbound I-580 for regional traffic in and out of Marin County, and enhancing and supporting economic prosperity in the project area by making it easier for people to get to their destinations. So since we last met with you, we've been doing a lot of public outreach and other behind-the-scenes activity. In December 2021, the TAM board approved four build alternatives to evaluate in the environmental phase. We also came to the council at that same time, and you also approved those same four alternatives. And one of the things that came out of our efforts is the comments from both the public and other project stakeholders about the congestion on the local streets within the project area, particularly the Bellum Boulevard corridor. This caused, part of the reason for the congestion along that area is the configuration of Bellum Boulevard and all the closely spaced traffic signals. And so our team initiated some early traffic studies to take a look at that congestion and, and find out if some local improvements could improve that as well. So some of the key outreach activities that we've done over the past couple of years, we've had seven stakeholder working group meetings. And that group is about 20 different people from different businesses and communities in the project area. And we're going to reconvene that group for the environmental process, which is going to be starting later this year. We did some civic engagement training sessions with resident leaders from the Canal and Woodland neighborhoods. And some of those folks are here tonight. It's good to see them. And that was a community center training course over a series of seven sessions back in the fall. And we're going to continue coordinating with this group as the project continues. And those sessions and workshops were conducted in Spanish. We've had ongoing coordination with various cities and agencies that are affected by the project and community organizations and property owners. And we're going to be holding the scoping meeting for the project later this summer or early fall. So on March 28th, the TAM board may, approved a couple of actions. I'm just going to summarize those and then I'll get into the details. But we added a Bellum corridor improvement standalone alternative that we're calling Alternative 7 and agreed to drop Alternatives 3B and Alternative 6, which are a couple of the connector alternatives that didn't have as much support as the others. And that results in the environmental process analyzing Alternatives 2, 3, 8, and 7. And I'll be showing you some maps, so you'll, you'll know what I'm referring to here. So this map may look a little familiar to you. It shows the project area, which consists of northbound 101 between Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and Bellum, the Sir Francis Drake Boulevard corridor that connects to the 580 bridge, and then the Bellum interchange in the left corner of the screen where you can see these green lines, and then the 580 corridor. So it's kind of this triangular area here. So the four alternatives that were approved previously are Alternative 2, which is this one in the middle that loosely follows Sim Street. It veers about, veers off 101 about halfway down the hill from Larkspur. Alternative 3A and 3B modified, which are both in the area behind Marin Square. And Alternative 6, which is an alternative that veers off 101 a little higher up the hill, goes over Jacobi Street and Anderson Drive, and then connects to 580. And it's a very high structure, 90 feet over Anderson Drive, and also the most expensive alternative. And it crosses over the Golden Gate Bridge Transit Yard. So the alternatives that the TAM board approved to eliminate at their last TAM board meeting were Alternatives 3 being modified, which is circled in red here, and Alternative 6, which is the one I just mentioned that has a very high structure and is also the most expensive alternative. It costs a little over a million dollars to evaluate each alternative. And so moving into environmental, we wanted to try to trim down the alternatives and be more focused on alternatives that we feel have more community support and less issues in terms of design exceptions and whatnot. So the reason these two alternatives were dropped, Alternative 3B modified, is that this one adds an additional lane and signal phase to the Bellum Boulevard off-ramp, which was, is an issue of concern to begin with. That off-ramp backs up. Caltrans expressed issues with this alternative and the design exceptions that would be required in addition to the impacts it has to the traffic on the ramp. And it didn't have a lot of support during public outreach process. And then, as I mentioned, Alternative 6, very high, the Golden Gate Bridge Transit Yard, and the high cost. So we, we will reduce the overall project development costs and environmental as well by eliminating these two alternatives from further study. So in terms of looking at Bellum Boulevard, the need for looking at this is basically the congestion along there caused by the closely spaced intersections. It doesn't provide enough room for storage of vehicles. All the intersections along that corridor allow for all turning movements, right, left, all the driveways. There's significant pedestrian and bicycle activity along this corridor and particularly along the on and off ramps. And the traffic backs up onto US 101 from the Bellum corridor. And we also are looking to improve the ingress and egress in and out of the Canal neighborhood and the Spinnaker Point, Bay Point neighborhoods as well. So some of the options that we're looking, that are, are being or will be further analyzed in the next phase include looking at roundabouts or signalized intersection modifications that may limit some of the turning movements along Bellum. So there'll be more to come on that in the coming months. This is just a picture of Bellum Boulevard, the corridor, and you could see highlighted in these blue circles outlined in red. This is, these are the areas that we're going to be looking at. And you can see how closely spaced all of these are together. And we're also going to be looking at the interchange itself and the on and off ramps and, and if there's improvements that we can make there as well. So our team did some preliminary traffic modeling of the Bellum corridor and some of these improvements to determine if we could improve the circulation on Bellum and reduce the spillback onto 101. And those results have been pretty encouraging. We found that we can reduce the backup on the Bellum Boulevard off-ramp and improve travel times to the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge, both along the Sir Francis Drake Route and the Bellum Boulevard Route, and improve travel times for local destinations in East San Rafael. So given those early traffic results, we recommended to the TAM board that we add a new alternative, as I mentioned, called Alternative 7. And this would be solely looking at improvements on Bellum Boulevard along with the direct connector options. So moving forward, these are the- So moving forward, this is a summary table of the three alternatives that we're talking about analyzing in the environmental document, in addition to a no-build alternative, which is required. Alternative 3A has a 35 mile an hour design speed. Alternative 2, 45 mile an hour design speed. And this chart also shows you the other improvements along Bellum that will be part of any alternative that is selected. The only real difference here is if the Alternative 7 is selected by itself, it would not include a direct connector. Just want to mention that there's another project coming up that's separate from this project, and it's an improvement project to the existing Bellum off-ramp from northbound 101. This is a little visual where you can see the intersection of the ramp with Bellum, and it shows some of the crosswalk improvements that the project will make. And this picture shows you the ramp itself, which would be widened to add an additional turn lane, and that will help alleviate some of the congestion on that ramp. The Caltrans has recently approved the design exceptions that were required. TAM is working on negotiating the right-of-way and completing the funding plan, and the hope is that we can start this project this fall and complete it next year. So some of our next steps is updating the city council, which we're here doing today, continuing the stakeholder working group, coordinating with them, continuing coordination with neighborhood leaders from the Canal and Woodland areas, conducting community workshops that would focus on the Bellum corridor improvements, and preparing for our scoping meeting, which would kick off the environmental process. And that's date to be determined, but late summer, early fall. And I believe that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Connie. There might be questions from the council, so I will... Vice Mayor Hill, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Connie, for the presentation. Thank you for all of the representatives tonight for coming to us. On Alternative 7, and I know we, it's probably not getting into details yet, on the graphic you showed, there were a series of dotted circles along Bellum. Are every one of those improvements being considered for Alternative 7?
Well, we're just showing that, let me get to that slide. It's basically showing just the area and the stretch of the Bellum corridor that we're going to be analyzing. So improvements may or may not happen at each intersection. It'll depend on what flushes out as we go through the process. But this is the limits of the area, is from Anderson Drive to Kerner.
Thank you. And then one final question on that one is, I saw the word roundabout, and where, if that were on this picture, where would the roundabout be considered?
If we are looking at a roundabout, it would be considered most likely at the Francisco Boulevard East and Bellum Boulevard intersection, and the Kerner Boulevard and Bellum Boulevard intersection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you for the update. Sort of a related question. For Alternative 7, there's, it looks like there's multiple improvements that are being proposed. Is it being proposed as one single project or a phased project?
The Bellum improvements would be a standalone project potentially, but we're also looking at phasing the local improvements regardless of which alternative is selected. So even if a connector's alternative is selected, we would clear the connector, we would clear, environmentally clear, all the local Bellum improvements. But the idea is to construct those Bellum improvements sooner than the connector. So we'd phase that work first.
Okay, great. So regardless, those would be prioritized first?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Thanks so much for the presentation. Delighted to hear that those other alternatives that we won't even mention are gone. So very happy to hear that, very glad to see you focusing your attention on our local streets and how we can sort of improve what we have and make it work better. I'm wondering, though, about taking that same type of an approach to the other backup on 101, and that is the one that comes from Sir Francis Drake exit. Is there any possibility of including that as a, I don't want to make it another option, but as another way of reducing the backup?
Well, we'll be studying the traffic that comes through Sir Francis Drake as well. There has been a series of improvements that have already been made along Sir Francis Drake that TAM did several years ago, and that actually did show some benefits to the traffic along Drake. But there's nothing currently planned, but that doesn't say, you know, we're going to be looking at everything, and if there's something that comes out of the process that would help that backup as well, we'll be looking at that.
Well, I would encourage you to keep both of those avenues, I guess, and those exit routes from 101 to the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge, because people on 101 use either of them. And we don't want everyone having to come down to Bellum, as wonderful as it will be when it's done, if there are other ways to similarly bring up Sir Francis Drake and more equitably distribute that traffic between the two ways to get to the bridge.
Okay. Yeah, we will keep that in mind.
Thank you. Councilmember Mica, any comments?
Yes, well, first of all, thank you so much for being here, and I think we've been working on this together for the last, since I became a council member. So really appreciate all the time, all the field trips and all the conversations. I share the enthusiasm from my colleague, Councilmember Bushy, about the elimination of those two alternatives. A question I have is that, so if Alternative 7 will be selected, could be also independently from the other two alternatives, correct?
It can be selected, did you ask?
Like, if there is like a study and, you know, it's decided that Alternative 7 is the alternative, you don't have to combine it with any other connector?
If that's what's selected, then no.
Okay.
I mean, it'll all be studied under the same environmental document. It won't be a separate environmental process. But if that's the alternative that floats, you know, comes to the top and that the community supports, then that would be the alternative, the approved alternative.
Well, I want to again share my enthusiasm for the improvements to Bellum. Adding that lane in the exit is going to be like a, I think, like a game changer. Also, the new Option 7, I really appreciate that. I have, after being in a lot of different field trips, I have always felt that without adding another lane on 101, any of the connectors don't work out, you know? But I look forward to see what the environmental report has to say. Really appreciate the continued engagement with the community. And I will add, in addition to the Canal and Bellum and Woodland, maybe some community members from Bret Hart, because they are directly affected by that exit as well. And really appreciate, I hear you saying that you're going to start at the end of the summer, beginning of the fall, which I think would be great, because a lot of the people are on vacation.
Right, right. Yes, we're taking that into consideration.
Great. So yeah, thank you very much. I don't have any other comments.
Thank you, the TAM team, for coming this evening. Director Richmond, Connie, Molly, Dan, really appreciate having the opportunity for my colleagues to hear this, as well as the TAM board members, who have been very supportive of San Rafael, in that we did want Option 7 to come forward for all the reasons that Councilmember Mica just talked about. So very appreciative, and also recognizing both Sister Canal, who's done a lot of work giving input, and I know they'll stay engaged on this important issue. And finally, our own DPW director and her team, because this is done on city streets, so the level of coordination that will be required. And the other, there's a lot of agencies in this one. The other one is Marin County. They are the lead agency. They're helping out from a capacity standpoint, so we're really thankful, because having these improvements sooner rather than later will be incredible for the community, and we look forward to having them. So thank you for coming and giving the short presentation, and if anyone else has heard it and has comments, I've already closed public comment, but do feel free to email city.clerk@cityofsanrufel.org for any comments. But stay tuned. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And we are going to renumber the alternatives, by the way.
Yeah.
As we go into the next phase. So next time we see you, they'll be renumbered.
They'll have names that resonate. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have two items, public hearings this evening. The first one is anti-displacement urgency ordinance and temporary relocation assistance for the Canal Opportunity Zone. And I will turn to City Manager Alilovic. Are we toggling? Not yet.
Not yet, in about 10 minutes.
I see Director Hinkle here, and Alexis Kaptanian, welcome. I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and councilmembers. Mica Hinkle, Community and Economic Development Director. I just want to upfront take this opportunity to thank and introduce and acknowledge Housing Manager Alexis Kaptanian for her work on this particular item, along with our one with Nira Doherty and our city attorney team. Anytime we look at emergency ordinances, it's a tall task, and it's something we do very rarely. I actually had to look up, how do we do this? So it's been that long for me. I know there's a lot of interest in this item, and it's something we've been working through as our housing challenges continue to work through for us and our neighbors. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alexis to kick us off for this staff presentation. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Alexis.
Thank you, Mica, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Alexis Kaptanian, Housing Manager for the City of San Rafael, and tonight I am presenting an urgency ordinance for your consideration. The proposed ordinance would provide temporary relocation assistance and a right of return for tenants in the Canal Opportunity Zone who are displaced from their unit due to substantial rehabilitation for health and safety. So a little bit of a background, in 2017, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Acts created tax incentives for investment in federally designated economically distressed census tracts called Opportunity Zones. To qualify for the program, a property that is acquired in the Opportunity Zone must be substantially improved over a 30-month period, a requirement that increases the risk of displacement for residential tenants due to no-fault evictions. San Rafael currently has one Opportunity Zone comprised of two census tracts in the Canal Neighborhood. The Opportunity Zone is shown in green, light green on this map. There are approximately 1,800 units in the Opportunity Zone, and about 1,500 are apartment units, giving the Opportunity Zone a much higher proportion of renters compared to the rest of the city. The Opportunity Zone has much higher rates of severe housing cost burden and overcrowding compared to the rest of San Rafael and Marin County. In March 2021, the city council adopted an ordinance requiring property owners to pay relocation assistance to tenants evicted in the Opportunity Zone for substantial rehabilitation. Since October 2022, city staff has reviewed permanent relocation payments for 31 tenant households who were evicted on the grounds of substantial rehabilitation for health and safety within the Canal Opportunity Zone. Additionally, the city processed permit applications for another 37 units in the Opportunity Zone where the property owner indicated that a no-fault eviction did not occur. By comparison, in the year and a half prior to that, the city did not review any relocation payments in the Opportunity Zone. Due to tight rental market in San Rafael and Marin County, it is extremely difficult for displaced tenants to secure other housing. Staff has received reports of displaced Opportunity Zone tenants moving out of Marin, doubling up with other families, or becoming unhoused and moving into their cars. San Rafael's 2023 through 2031 housing element and the city council's goals and objectives direct staff to conduct stakeholder engagement and evaluate citywide tenant protection policies. And staff is working on data collection and planning community engagement for this effort. The proposed urgency ordinance, which is specific to the Canal Opportunity Zone, is an interim measure to prevent further displacement of families due to substantial rehabilitation while the city undergoes this broader process regarding citywide tenant protection policies. So the proposed ordinance temporarily amends an existing San Rafael policy called Cause Required for Eviction, which regulates the grounds for eviction in properties with three or more dwelling units. Under the current policy, a property owner can evict a tenant to perform substantial repairs. If this happens, the property owner is required to pay the tenant a relocation assistance payment, but the tenant does not have a right to return to the unit when the repairs are completed. The proposed urgency ordinance amends the existing policy for the Opportunity Zone only, removing substantial rehabilitation as a cause for eviction in most cases. The proposed ordinance would require property owners to offer tenants the right to return to their unit after repairs are completed. If the tenant wants to return to the unit after repairs are completed, the tenant must continue to pay rent while the unit is being repaired in order to maintain the existing lease. While the unit is being repaired, the landlord must either pay the tenant a daily amount to cover the cost of temporary lodging, or the landlord has the option to provide a comparable unit on the property or another property in San Rafael. If the tenant does not want to be temporarily relocated and return to the unit following repairs, the tenant can choose to move out permanently and is eligible for a permanent relocation assistance payment, which already exists under city policy. This policy would be in effect through December 31st, 2026, in line with the expiration of the Opportunity Zone tax benefits. The package under consideration tonight also includes a resolution specifying payment amounts. The daily temporary relocation payments proposed are $250 per day during the first 29 days of displacement, based on the cost of hotel, motel, and short-term rental options in Marin County. And then, starting on day 30, the payment would be based on either the tenant's monthly lease rent or the current fair market rent, whichever is greater. So for example, the 2024 fair market rent for a two-bedroom is $3,359, so the daily payment would be about $112. The proposed ordinance requires staff review of relocation plans during the permitting process, and so the resolution proposes an administrative fee based on the fully burden rate of the staff reviewer. So to recap, the urgency ordinance would amend Municipal Code Chapter 10.105, which is the cause required for eviction policy. It would also amend Municipal Code Chapter 10.111, which is the relocation assistance in Opportunity Zones, the permanent relocation assistance. And then the resolution would establish temporary relocation assistance payment amounts and an administrative processing fee. And this policy would be in effect through December 31st, 2026, in the Canal Opportunity Zone. The city council has the following options to consider: adopt the urgency ordinance and resolution; adopt the urgency ordinance and resolution with modifications; direct staff to return with more information; or take no action. I'm joined by Director Mica Hinkle, and we are available to take your questions.
Thank you. I will turn to my colleagues for questions in one moment, but could you just speak to the difference between an urgency ordinance and the usual way that we adopt an ordinance? Because I don't think that was covered in the presentation. I don't know, with the city attorney or Director Hinkle? Just a short, we don't need it long, but just why this is an urgency ordinance and what the difference is. Welcome, Nira. Wait, you're not on.
Christine's going to kick me out when she comes back. An urgency ordinance, unlike a regular ordinance, is effective immediately upon adoption. Regular ordinances require two readings in 30 days to become effective. The urgency ordinance that's before you this evening is a health and safety violation, or I'm sorry, a health and safety urgency ordinance. It's not the land use urgency ordinance that has a set expiration date. This urgency ordinance can be adopted, made effective immediately upon findings by the city council of urgent health and safety needs. Those findings are included in the recitals of the ordinance tonight.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that to pass an ordinance, the vote is different than a regular ordinance?
Thank you. It does require a fourth-fifth's vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, that would be immediate, and the vote structure's different.
Mayor Kate, if I may toggle our interpreters?
Okay. Good. Give my colleagues a chance to think of their questions.
And Marina, if you could mute.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will start with questions only. Vice Mayor Hill, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Alexis, for the report. I have several questions about the ordinance and its implementation. Not at this, I'll ask several questions about why to establish that there is urgency. With respect to payments, are these more along the lines of a per diem? In other words... In other words, no one would have to prove and enter receipts into a system? These payments are made irrespective of whatever accommodation a person might make?
That's correct. The tenant would not be providing receipts to the property owner.
And then what is the timing for these payments? Are they upfront? Are they incremental?
Yes, it's a weekly incremental payment.
Thank you. And then, I noticed that as we're approaching a sunset date, I can imagine scenarios that become more complicated, say with when we're within 60 days, when we're within 30 days, and then obviously the day of. Would we then be asked, pretty certainly, potentially, I mean, obviously many things can change between now and the end of 2026, but probably come back to take another action at that point, probably in advance of 60 days of the retirement of this urgency ordinance?
So your City Council adopted the Housing Element last year and also the City Council's goals and objectives, and the timeline commitment is to work on a citywide evaluation and identification of tenant protection policies in 2025. And so the intention is that this is an interim sort of stopgap measure until we can get to those citywide policies.
Thank you. And then, in the staff report itself, I know that there were a series of metrics that would start to be examined more closely. Can you take a little bit of time to enumerate those and share those? Because I think it's important for folks to hear.
Yeah, absolutely. So we would be evaluating this policy during the course of its implementation, including looking at what are the options that tenants and property owners elect? Because there are choices, right, whether to pay the per diem or to offer a comparable unit? Where are those comparable units in the city? How many substantial rehabilitations are we seeing that require tenant relocation? And then, how many tenants opt out of that temporary relocation and decide to be permanently relocated instead? And then also the average length of time for a rehabilitation project from the time a building permit's issued to the final inspection? So that when we come back to the council and report out on this, we have data to say how successful it's been and what the outcomes have been.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah, questions on this item?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm very excited to actually be talking about this, you know, with urgency. So could you, I don't know if you have these numbers, but like currently, if somebody has received a notice, if we approve this tonight, does it have like an immediate action where that notice will have to, you know, comply with all the requirements?
Yes. So in the case that a notice has been issued, but the tenant has not yet been evicted, or like the tenant has not yet vacated the unit, this policy would apply in those cases.
And thank you. And do we know how many people are in that situation?
I am not aware of any tenants in that situation currently.
Okay. And then, as we approach in like the end of 2026, I will imagine if somebody's in the middle of the process, what happens after 2026? I'm hoping that maybe next year we'll have a more permanent solution, but if we don't, what will happen at the end of 2026?
Sure. So rehabilitations and notices that are initiated prior to December 31, 2026 will be covered by this policy.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you, and thank you for the update. We had a couple email exchanges earlier, too. One tactical question, where there was a requirement that the tenant still continues to pay rent, is that rent amount subject to increases?
Yes. So the tenants would still be subject, for units that, where the state law and the state rent cap applies, the tenants would be subject to increases up to the state rent cap, which for Marin County is currently at 9.2% within a 12-month period.
Okay. And then, we had also gone, we had a number of questions and conversations around the end date. I think that is sort of interesting. I was wondering if you could also talk about the Opportunity Zone and what's happening in that space and if we are anticipating changes? And if there are changes, because the Opportunity Zone is not defined as by the city, it's a federal mandate, right? And so if there are changes at the federal level, how would that impact this ordinance? And then going forward, other type of changes?
Sure. So Congress is discussing an extension of the Opportunity Zone policy, and it looks like that would come forward for consideration next year. If the City Council wanted to consider an extension of this policy, the recommendation would be to do so under a permanent ordinance rather than an urgency ordinance. I don't know, Nira, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, questions?
Just a couple, focusing on the numbers. I just want to make sure I understand what happened here. So in 2017, the Opportunity Zone was created. And then it wasn't until 2021 that the council adopted the permanent eviction ordinance, which awards every tenant that is evicted up to $17,000. So that happened, and that applies only in the Opportunity Zone. So every tenant in the Opportunity Zone, if they get evicted, is entitled to up to $17,000 as we sit here today.
Yes, and just as a point of clarification, it's every tenant household, not every tenant.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So every tenant household is entitled to up to $17,000 as we sit here today. Okay. And since 2021, there have been a total of 31 tenant households that have availed themselves of this up to $17,000 payment.
The city, yeah, the city has processed that many relocation payments through its permitting process.
And the process requires that everything go through there. So there aren't landlords out there writing checks for $17,000 that we don't know about?
It is possible that there are landlords issuing permanent relocation assistance payments that the city is unaware of because there are bases for eviction that do not require a permit by the city. And so although they're required to provide notice to the city, it's possible some have happened without notice to the city.
Okay, but the ones we know about are 31. So in the entire Opportunity Zone, in the last two and a half years, there've been 31 evictions that we know about. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Evictions, yes.
Okay. And there's about as much time going forward, assuming Congress doesn't extend the Opportunity Zone, that we've got about as much history as we have future in this program. Like two and a half years-ish, either way. So we could estimate that in the remaining two and a half years, there would be, based on the information that we have, there'd be about 31.
Well, it's hard to say that because there have been a fair amount of writing around that the Opportunity Zone program got quite a slow start at the beginning because investors were trying to figure out how to take advantage of the program. And so there is some speculation that the program could ramp up. But it's, so it's hard to say.
But it's seven and a half years in and two and a half left, so we're in the last quarter. Okay, all right, just so I understand that. So we're, based on the information we have, our best estimate is 31, maybe plus, tenant households will be subjected to this, will be subject to this displacement ordinance.
The other thing I want to, sort of a nuance I want to bring up is that there's tenant households who undergo a no-fault eviction. And then there's often another set of tenant households who leave or are displaced in anticipation of being evicted. There's tenants who accept a buyout offer, knowing that an eviction is coming. And so there are, the 31 doesn't necessarily capture the number of tenants and tenant households who are being displaced.
Oh, I'm trying to estimate how many would be subject to this proposed displacement ordinance. So the ones that would be going through the formal eviction process and would otherwise be within the current program.
Right, but this matters, the other numbers matter, and the reason they matter is because if a tenant knows their rights and they know that there's, that if they, for instance, reject a buyout, that they'll then have a right to return, their choice might be really different.
Right. I understand that concept, but just numerically from counting them, in order to get to the buyout point, they would be counted as one of these.
Could you repeat the question?
I'm trying to estimate how many tenant households we think would be subject to this in the next two and a half years. And we have two and a half years of data, and I'm suggesting that that's what we would use. And these are the people that would be eligible for the $17,000, up to $17,000 payment. So, okay, good. So now, and then just to make it clear, so the future tenant households will be presented with the choice of up to $17,000 or the relocation program that we're talking about. And those people receiving that choice, by definition, are only within the Opportunity Zone. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have one follow-up question. I think you mentioned this, but just to have clarity for everybody. So the current policy does have relocation assistance already, so that part's not new. What's changing is the amount that people would be entitled to over different periods of time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, that's not a new policy, it's just an amendment. Okay. There might be other questions that come up. Thank you all. I will open up the public comment on this item. And so come on down, and you'll have two minutes to share your thoughts. And at the end, if there are any additional questions, that at that time, we'll ask them of staff. Welcome, Mr. Pari.
How are you this evening, everybody? It's a beautiful day. I'm going to get ahead of the crowd.
Do you speak into the microphone a little bit better? Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Better. Thank you.
Sorry. That was a pretty clear presentation. That's very good. Thank you. I'm going to ask a few questions and make a comment. The $17,000, is that, does that increase as the rent increases? So every 9% and a half percent, does that 17 then get bumped up gradually to keep equity with inflation? And then, a person who decides to relocate temporarily and then return to their domicile, whether at the original or a subsequent equal one, are they then paying the market rate? Or are they then paying the same rent they were paying when they originally left? Plus maybe an increase of 9% or whatever the inflation is at that point in time? I'm sorry, I did not read the staff report. Some of these questions may have been covered there. This is a difficult question, and forgive me if I misphrase it, but it sounds sometimes like landlords have been remiss in maintaining their properties and maybe have taken the opportunity, this Opportunity Zone led to legislation, has offered them, and then decide, well, I can make some money on this, so why don't I fix up the property and raise the rent to market rate? And I'm wondering if there's anything City Council or Public Works can do, or Housing, whoever is responsible for that, to ensure that houses are maintained in a proper fashion, so people aren't living in substandard accommodations and then asked to pay increased rent to enhance the landlord's rent so they can cover their expenses?
Thank you for your comments and questions. And as I said, we'll accumulate the questions and we'll have staff answer them at the end. Welcome, Aaron.
Thank you. I'm Mayor Kate, Council, City Staff, Aaron Burnett with Canal Alliance and also a resident of San Rafael. I first want to say I recognize that the city is currently in a process of doing work to have more comprehensive citywide tenant protections. And you're not taking this lightly. This was a lift, and I just want to say I really appreciate you listening. We've, as Canal Alliance, supported community members over the last year on this issue. It's been really difficult as a community advocate to hear the stories. I think the voices that would speak to this loudest are actually the ones that aren't here. Dozens of families have already been subject to no-fault evictions and have been forced to move not just out of San Rafael or the county, but far, far away to even, you know, Los Angeles County places where they're no longer in schools and no longer in the same community. So thank you. This is really a really important stopgap, and I appreciate that. Speaking to the lack of data, I think it's really important, it's a good question and it's a big issue. I think as we work beyond tonight, and I hope tonight you all do vote in the affirmative, that we need to look at that question. It's a bigger issue. You know, the county has a landlord tenant registry. There are other ways we can start to collect more data. As City Staff mentioned, like we do know of a certain amount of evictions because they did go through the formal process, but there are, in fact, tenants that, due to fear or, you know, not knowing their rights, fall, you know, fall by the wayside, and we don't hear about those. So all of our data on that note is subjective, but I'm letting you know, we do hear about them, they are happening, and this is an urgent issue. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for Canal Alliance's role and collaboration on this. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Taher Dean, and I'm a staff attorney at Public Advocates, a nonprofit based in San Francisco. Public Advocates aims to advance the right of all people to live in communities with good jobs, schools, and city services, regardless of race, ethnicity, or income. And ensures low-income communities have a voice and are protected from displacement. I'm here in support of Canal Alliance and the proposed anti-displacement ordinance. We understand that a significant number of tenants living in the canal are at risk for eviction due to this just cause reason of substantial rehabilitation. If those tenants are displaced due to substantial rehab evictions, the community will be negatively impacted, no doubt. In addition, the ordinance should include stronger enforcement mechanisms like adding noncompliance as an affirmative defense in case of an eviction. As the city aims to study the current housing crisis in Marin to seek permanent solutions pursuant to commitments made in the Housing Element, we ask that the city takes immediate action to protect those tenants that are most at risk right now. And as an attorney that was previously working in San Rafael, you know, witnessing the number of people that are self-evicting, I find that this ordinance is really important at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Hola, soy Crisparra. Soy residente del área del canal. Y tengo la esperanza de que mis vecinos y yo seguiremos con nuestro vecindario con un poco de tranquilidad con esta denuncia de urgencia y también con la esperanza que inversionistas que quieren invertir y convertir nuestros edificios en lujosos departamentos y así contribuyan a una gentrificación no sea tan factible. Y también que nuestro vecindario, además nuestros arrendadores, no nos dejen en el limbo cuando hay situaciones injustas o cuando hayas estas relaciones significativas. Escuché hablar sobre los 31 familias, pero hay muchas familias que han recibido esos y a lo mejor por miedo no han dicho. Entonces sabemos, nuestra comunidad sabe que son más de 31, que pueden llegar a ser hasta 50 o mucho más, pero muchos de nosotros por miedo no hablamos y no decimos. Por favor, yo de verdad les doy las gracias por considerar esta ordenanza y por no dejarnos solos en esto, y que nuestras voces sean escuchadas. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, thank you. Wait one moment, why we have the interpretation?
Hi, I'm Cris Parra, I'm a resident of the Canal District. And I have the hope that residents will be able to live peacefully there with this urgent ordinance. And I hope that the investors that want to build luxury apartments and make the zone gentrified do not succeed. I also would like the neighbors not to have to live in limbo when there are unjust situations. I heard the data of thirty-one families, but there are many more that because of fear have not spoken up. I know that it's more than thirty-one, it could be up to fifty, but because we are fearful, we don't say anything, we don't tell anybody. So, thank you for considering this ordinance and for hearing our voices.
Welcome, we're ready for your comments.
Buenas noches, primero mi gente quiero agradecer otra vez la oportunidad de dejarnos expresar. Yo estoy aquí como líder de Voces de Canal, como líder de mi comunidad. Yo abogo por esta protección de reubicación de inquilinos para la zona de oportunidad de Canal, ya que esto ofrecerá más tranquilidad para los residentes que reciban una carta de remodelación o de reparación de vivienda. A veces nuestros residentes no tienen la oportunidad de regresar a su misma vivienda como lo que pasó en muchas familias de los cuatrocientos. Con esta ley, eso ayudará a que ellos se sientan protegidos, que tengan la oportunidad de decidir si regresan a la misma vivienda donde muchos años han vivido. Y si ellos deciden moverse a otro lado, lo cual lo veo muy difícil porque muchas de nuestras familias ya están concentradas en el área de Canal. Yo voto por esta propuesta y muchas gracias por la oportunidad.
Gracias, thank you.
Okay, I wanna thank you again for the opportunity, giving us the opportunity to express ourselves. I'm a leader of Voces de Canal, a leader in my community. I'm advocating for this relocation package. It will be something that's better for the residents. So when they receive a letter that their home is to be remodeled or repaired, and sometimes they can't go back to the home that they've lived in for so many years, as happened with the four hundred, I want the residents to feel protected and to have the opportunity to decide if they want to come back to the home that they've lived in for many years. Or if they want to move, though, that would be difficult because there's a big concentration of families there in Canal. So I want to, thank you for your consideration, I want to vote for this ordinance.
Thank you, welcome, we're ready for you.
Muchas gracias, estoy de nuevo aquí para hablar. Mi nombre es Irene De León, soy miembro del grupo de Voces de Canal, líder de nuestra comunidad, y estoy aquí para apoyar la propuesta de reubicación de los inquilinos que se ven afectados cuando son desalojados por reparaciones en los edificios, ya que estos cambios afectan en todos los ámbitos. Porque he visto cómo hay familias que pierden sus hogares y también pierden sus trabajos, porque muchos tienen que irse a otras ciudades. Los niños también se ven afectados porque ya tienen programas y deben dejarlos y alejarse de sus amigos. Diecisiete mil dólares no son suficientes para reconstruir la red de apoyo que muchas veces ya se tienen en la comunidad. Entonces estoy pidiendo, abogando por esta propuesta, que por favor aprueben la propuesta para darle seguridad a nuestras familias, a nuestros vecinos en esta zona de oportunidad. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us speak. My name is Irene De León, I am a leader with Voces de Canal and a leader in my community. I am supporting this relocation package for, in the name of the families that are affected by all the repairs and everything that's going on around them. Many families lose their homes and their jobs when they have to go to other cities. And also the children are affected as well because they have to move and leave their friends behind. Seventeen thousand dollars is not enough to support the circle of support that is in the communities. So please, please give the families the opportunity to feel secure in their residences.
Thank you, welcome. Hold the microphone, there we go.
Council members, yeah, there we go, hear me? My name's Andrew Ellsworth, I am a resident of San Rafael, also a board member at Community Action Marin, here tonight to speak to the critical need for tenant protections in our city, particularly in the Canal neighborhood. Marin is in the midst of a housing crisis when it comes to affordable housing, okay? It's a particularly urgent in Marin's Canal neighborhood, which is the sole opportunity zone in the county. The opportunity zone designation in 2018 was intended to stimulate economic growth in underserved areas, but it has instead stimulated displacement among our neighbors in the Canal. I think as we've already heard from other residents tonight, members of our community, my neighbors, that, I mean, this displacement, whether you're a person who is actually displaced or someone who knows someone who's displaced, or someone who could be displaced, it's incredibly disruptive. And it is, it creates uncertainty for parents, for their children, for their friends, for their schools. So I think, I speak for a lot of people here, I think that the, it's really incredibly important that this urgency ordinance gets moved forward tonight. I think it will provide relief, it will provide certainty to our neighbors, to members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you to Cam too, for your collaboration. Welcome.
Good evening, my name is Gina Gilmet, I'm with Community Action Marin. I serve as their chief strategy officer, and I am also a resident of San Rafael. And I just want to thank you, members of the city council and members of the city staff, for bringing forward this ordinance, really listening to the needs and the voices of community. So thank you for that. We urge the council's passage of this urgency ordinance to bring much-needed relief to residents. It's important, it is urgent to address the displacement we see happening in the opportunity zone and the ripple effect to our community. At the same time, I also want to urge you to consider the enforcement mechanism, that in order for this to have the intended impact in the community, the enforcement must not rely on tenants themselves to bring forth, if there are any things, you know, in the policy not carried forward, that will not translate into the intended impact. So urge you to address that. The rental registry is perhaps one option, I know that's being discussed. And also just really want to appreciate the ongoing work to address tenant protection issues citywide, and we look forward to continuing to partner with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Hi Lucy.
Good evening, I'm Lucy Hollingsworth, I'm the senior policy attorney with Legal Aid of Marin. Our mission is to provide access to the civil justice system to low-income and our underserved residents of Marin County and foster more inclusive and equitable communities. We appreciate this council's consideration and staff's incredibly hard work to address the immediate loss of valuable community members due to substantial remodel evictions. We do strongly urge, however, that this draft be amended to include a strong enforcement mechanism. As currently written, a tenant only has a private right of action for wrongful eviction. In reality, a tenant can only enforce their rights under this ordinance after they have already been displaced. And that is if they have the time and the courage to do that. To truly work towards creating a more equitable city, San Rafael must add that noncompliance with this ordinance is an affirmative defense to an unlawful detainer. San Rafael contains approximately twenty percent of the population of Marin, but in 2023, over forty-two percent of Legal Aid of Marin's housing caseload residents of San Rafael. All tenants across the city of San Rafael have a right to affordable, secure, inhabitable housing, free from harassment, discrimination, and arbitrary evictions. We urge this council to consider this protection as just the first step towards recognizing this right, and look forward to working with the city to develop an inclusive housing policies that help achieve this goal. Thank you.
Thank you Lucy, and thank you to Legal Aid of Marin.
Buenas noches, yo estoy más chaparrita. Bueno, buenas noches, gracias a todos ustedes por recibirnos esta noche. Me da mucho gusto que nos hayan aceptado de participar en esta reunión tan importante. En lo personal, mi nombre es Darlene Ruiz y vivo en el Canal. Y como voluntaria he apoyado para que los cambios de mejorar nuestra comunidad sucedan. Y pienso que ya están sucediendo muchos cambios buenos para nuestra comunidad, yo quiero darle las gracias. Pero me ha tocado ver injusticia por parte de los dueños de los edificios con nuestros vecinos. Esta propuesta de verdad va a ayudar a muchas familias, porque en verdad lo necesitan. Cuando a las familias les llegan el aviso de remodelación o que se tienen que desalojar, ellos no saben qué hacer, se pone muy difícil la situación. Y como saben ellos que somos voluntarios, pues vienen y se nos acercan cuál es el apoyo que podemos darle. Y bueno pues, en este momento yo les quiero agradecer todo lo que están haciendo para que esta propuesta siga adelante y nos sigan apoyando siempre como ustedes lo han hecho hasta ahora. Muchas gracias, les agradezco, y buenas noches. Gracias.
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you for receiving us here, good evening. I like very much that you've accepted our participation because this is really important, for me, this is really important. My name is Darlene Ruiz, I live in the Canal area. And I support the improvements that I've seen so far. We've had some good improvements. And I want to address the injustice of the owners that we've seen with the neighbors. So, but this ordinance will help many families. When they receive a letter or a notice of remodeling that's going to happen, they don't know what to do. And so they approach us as volunteers to ask for support and how, you know, how we can help them. So thank you for all you're doing for us. I hope this proposal goes forward, and I support it, and thank you for always supporting us.
Welcome Omar.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, city council. Omar Carea, CEO of Canal Alliance, one of the major employers of the East of Rafael, also a landlord, property owner there. First, I want to thank the city staff or CBO partners, and most importantly, the residents. Some of them are here. They not just have been working for a long time in this issue, but they have been impacted by this at a personal level. The report confirms what many of us actually hear daily. A lot of people that are not protected in the opportunity zone with existing protections. That's why I fully support the urgency ordinance proposed by the staff. I also look forward to collaborating with all of you and the implementation of all the programs in the housing element related to protection, production, and preservation, because that's what we need to solve the housing crisis. I also look forward to collaborating with you on building the database that you need to make decisions. I hear from the council how important it is for you to make those decisions, but right now, what you are able to see is just the tip of the iceberg. You don't see what we all see and what residents see every single day. And that's why building a tenant registry can potentially be the solution for all of that, for all of you guys to have the data that you need to make decisions. So I will be providing support with my staff and with our CBO partners to work with all of your staff and with all of you in building it. So again, I just want to say thank you, I know it has not been easy. I know a lot of people expect more, but we also understand that there is a process to get there. And that's why I really encourage all of you to support, let's stop the pain that many families see in the Canal and the opportunity zone, and let's continue working together in a more comprehensive plan to support not just tenants, but also to promote production and preservation. Thank you.
Thank you Omar. Welcome, go ahead.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Cruz Vargas, y soy voluntaria de Voces del Canal y también vivo en Canal. Agradecemos por la ordenanza temporal, ya que hay muchos desalojos y la gente no sabe qué hacer o dónde acudir. Y es muy difícil que los inquilinos consigan otra vivienda. No son treinta y uno, son más personas desalojadas. De las que se está hablando es muchas familias, ojalá y la ordenanza hubiese sido antes para que muchas familias que se fueron por miedo, por no hablar, por no saber a dónde acudir, hubiesen tenido esta oportunidad también y poderles ayudar también. Ojalá y fueran ordenanzas permanentes, porque pues son solo dos años, pasa muy rápido el tiempo, ¿verdad? Pues gracias por escucharnos nuevamente, y seguiremos abogando por que haya más ordenanzas por largo plazo y por la vivienda de los inquilinos. Gracias, gracias.
Good evening, my name is Cruz Vargas, and I'm a volunteer with Voces de Canal, and I also live there. I want to appreciate this provisional ordinance because it will help prevent a lot of displacement. People, when they get displaced, they have to find another place to live, and that's difficult for them. And it's, you say it's thirty-one, it's really more than thirty-one. Too bad this ordinance wasn't approved before because it could have helped a lot of people who were displaced at that time, who didn't know where to go. This would have helped them. Hopefully, we can get a permanent ordinance because this only lasts two years and that time goes by very quickly. So thank you for listening to us, and I will be advocating for a long-term ordinance.
Welcome, hi Ethan.
Good evening, city council. My name is Ethan Stroll, I'm a citizen of San Rafael. I work professionally in housing justice at Legal Aid of Marin, and I also volunteer as a community organizer with the Democratic Socialists of America in Marin. So first, I just want to say, thank you for listening to San Rafael tenants, other community members, and community organizations tonight. This ordinance, for that very specific slice of tenants who are facing eviction due to their home being remodeled, it'll be hugely impactful. If they have relocation costs covered and a right to return, they might not end up homeless, overcrowded, or out of Marin entirely since they were unable to find alternative housing in a mere sixty days. And the current policy of permanent relocation assistance of multiple thousands of dollars might not be helpful when a good credit report is what's needed to apply for rental housing. So please do everything in your power to approve this ordinance and ensure that tenants have the legal tools to deal with noncompliance. Making a low-income tenant go to small claims or civil court after eviction is a huge barrier to entry. And for everyone else facing housing security in San Rafael, this is still not an answer, and I look forward to continuing those conversations as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, good evening, Mayor Kate, council, city staff, so good to be here. I want to start by thanking you for considering this ordinance. I am Yolanda Oviedo, and I'm here representing Canal Alliance. I'm the senior housing manager at Canal Alliance. And I'm here to speak in support of this ordinance. And even though there's still so much that needs to be done to protect our tenants and our community, this is a really great start, and I applaud this. I'm glad that we're here having these conversations. We have been, Canal Alliance has been attempting to acquire properties in the community, and this has been this has been, you know, we've been attempting this maybe within the last two years and um, we've been competing with, you know, market buyers and we've seen many buildings being sold to, you know, other uh, investors that are just looking for an investment opportunity that will become, you know, an opportunity for displacement for our community. Uh, because a lot of these buildings are not in the best condition and so we understand that uh, you know, rehabilitation will be required in order for them to, you know, be habitable. Uh, so, I, we hope that you vote in favor tonight um, for this ordinance and um, I do thank the city staff uh, for working so hard along with Canal Alliance and then other supportive uh, staff that are here with other agencies, our community that's been working really hard and I look forward to also being here in the near future. Um, you know, uh, representing the community and um, looking to adopt more policies that will protect uh, our, our community. Um, not just in the canal but really uh, San Rafael, Marin from, you know, displacement. Thank you.
Thank you, Yolanda. Welcome Marina.
Good.
Okay, muy buenas noches a todos, ah, mi nombre es Marina Palma, trabajando como voluntaria con la Unión de Inquilinos del 400 Canal. Las palabras no son suficientes para expresarles nuestro agradecimiento por sus votos. Para presentar y primero Dios aprobar esta ordenanza. A nombre de la Unión de Inquilinos del 400 Canal tenemos unas preguntas. Pero antes que nada le quiero dar las gracias infinitas a Community Action de Marin, a Legal Aid of Marin, a Canal Alliance y a la Ciudad de San Rafael por hacer posible este documento. Ah, nuestras preguntas son, a pensando en otros compañeros inquilinos en Rafa, en San Rafael, que podrían estar pasando por traumas de viviendas similares, ¿por qué no buscar que esta ordenanza proteja a todos los inquilinos de San Rafael? Es una pregunta que ya la contestaron, pero nosotros estamos pensando que queremos que la gente deje de sufrir por la falta de vivienda o porque también este, le pregunten que desalojen. Ah, contestando la pregunta aquí de la, de la Council Mary Beth, no solo han sido treinta y unas personas en, en el 400 Canal, hay noventa y nueve unidades, los siguen renovando y yo creo que esta ordenanza que está primero Dios la prevén hoy, les ayudaría muchísimo a estas personas. También creemos que es importante que los inquilinos conozcan los detalles de esta ordenanza. Por favor, háganos saber, ponernos en contacto con cualquiera de nosotros en cómo cuando ustedes traduzcan al español el informe de todo el personal y la ordenanza. Quisiéramos saber cuándo va a suceder, suceder esto y cuándo vamos a poder tener acceso a esta información. La última pregunta que tengo es que, ¿cómo planean ustedes informar a todos los residentes de la zona de oportunidad sobre esta bendita ordenanza? Y a todos los residentes de San Rafael. Creemos que de tan excelente noticia deberían enterarse todos, esperando con respeto que nos dejen saber. Nosotros estamos dispuestos a apoyar para pasar la voz, muy agradecida con todos.
Thank you Marina.
Hi, my na, my name is Marina Palma and I'm a volunteer with uh, Renters Association on 400 Canal. Uh, I, there aren't enough words to express uh, our appreciation for uh, you backing this ordinance uh, for 400 Canal. Uh, thank you as well to the, the different um, com, uh, entities uh, that have supported this, Canal Alliance, City of San Rafael. Um, and we have some questions for you, I think some of them have been answered already, but um, there are many residents who have suffered trauma because of the displacements. Um, and why are, is this ordinance not covering all of the residents? We wanna stop their suffering um, and the loss that of, of their homes when they get displaced. They were saying there were thirty-one displacements, but uh, there are currently ninety-nine units undergoing remodeling. Um, they're still working on that. And uh, if this ordinance gets approved, it will help them. Um, another question is, uh, once we, you have all the details of the ordinance, uh, can you contact us to let us know when they will be translated to Spanish, the report and the ordinance? Um, and, and we'd like to know when that would happen. Also, we would like the community be, to be informed, uh, not just the opportunities zone, but all of the residents in San Rafael should be informed about this ordinance. Uh, so respectfully, we would like to have you let us know and we support, uh, we thank you for your support of this ordinance.
I, I just wanna share with you that I did email my uh, my concerns in English, uh, so you can have a full report on it.
Yes, yeah, thank you Marina. Welcome, hi.
Buenas noches miembros del Consejo, administradores de la ciudad, asistentes y todo el personal. Mi nombre es Luis Martínez, eh, voluntario de la Unión de Inquilinos del 400 Canal. A nombre de nuestros inquilinos y vecinos de la ciudad, les agradecemos por acudir a nuestro rescate. Sabemos que la vivienda ha sido un reto durante tantos años en San Rafael, pero hace tres años la situación empeoró en el 400 Canal. Hemos estado sufriendo más desde que los nuevos dueños se hicieron cargo. Las continuas visitas de apoyo de nuestra ahora administradora de la ciudad, a Kristi Alilovitch y de la concejal municipal Michael Lores Ulati significaron mucho para nosotros. Han sido testigos de varias ocasiones del trauma por lo que han pasado nuestras familias. Gracias por estar aquí eh, para nosotros. A nombre de la Unión de Inquilinos del 400, te, tengo un par de preguntas para ustedes. Eh, ¿por qué esta ordenanza es temporal? ¿Qué pasaría después del doce treinta y uno del dos mil veintiséis? Esperamos una respuesta. Pregunta número dos. ¿Podrían incluir en la ordenanza qué es, qué sucederá si los inquilinos reciben un aviso de que tienen que mudarse de su apartamento? O de su unidad y los inquilinos eligen mudarse a otra, a una unidad renovada? Mientras que la suya se renueva, ¿pueden regresar a su unidad original pagando la misma cantidad de alquiler? O menos, o que los, o menos que los precios publicados para las unidades renovadas? Espero hayan entendido mi pregunta pero es, oh, muchas gracias por escucharnos y estar atentos a nuestras inquietudes, nuestras presiones, gracias a todos.
Gracias, thank you.
Hey, good evening, uh, members of the council and staff, my name is Luis Martínez. I'm a part of the 400 Canal Tenant Association. Uh, thank you for rescuing us. It's been a challenge uh, to live there for many years, but three years ago it got worse uh, with the new owners. Um, and visits from Kristi Alilovitch and Michael Loomis. Um, we are so grateful for that because they've witnessed the trauma of the families, that, the trauma that the families are going through. So, uh, thank you for being here. Um, I have a couple of questions for you. Why, number one would be, why is the ordinance only temporary? Uh, what's going to happen after December of twenty twenty-six? So I hope you will answer that. And the second question is, uh, what, let me see, I'm sorry. What will happen uh, when uh, people receive the notice uh, that they have to move to, so they are moved to a remodeled unit, um, while their unit is being remodeled? Can they go back with the same rent or paying less than the, what the remodeled unit costs? Those are my questions, I hope you understand them and uh, thank you very much.
Welcome, hi.
Muy buenas noches a todos presentes, mi nombre es Will, Winston Wuxla. Apoyo a la Unión Inquilinos de 400 Canal. Como inquilino de la comunidad de Canal, me gustaría agradecerles por protegernos bajo la ordenanza de urgencia temporal contra el desplazamiento y asistencia para reubicación temporal. Nos sentimos bendecidos de que esta ordenanza se esté llevando a cabo. Sabemos que esta ordenanza es algo trabajo de muchas personas involucradas y por eso estamos agradecidos. Quisiera pedirle en nombre de la Unión de Inquilinos del 400 Canal que por favor tomen consideración la siguiente pregunta. ¿Podría por favor tomar en cuenta en la nueva ordenanza la necesidad de aquellos inquilinos que inicialmente firmaron su contrato en inglés? Tenga la opción de recibir el aviso de desalojo en español u otro idioma. Muchas gracias por su atención a nuestra pregunta.
Gracias.
Good evening, my name is Luis and I'm so sorry I didn't get the last name. Uh, I'm part of the renters from the 400 Canal uh, area. Um, as a renter, thank you for protecting us with this urgent uh, ordinance uh, against displacement and temporary housing, we are blessed uh, because we know this has been a result of arduous work by many, so thank you for that. And in name, in the name of the renters of 400 Canal, I would like to ask this question. Uh, will you take into account under this new ordinance the need uh, for that the original renters have who received their lease in English? Um, if the displacement notice can be in Spanish? I hope you will take this question into account and thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome, well, good evening Honorable Mayor Kate, Council members and city staff, my name is Jack Buckhorn. I'm the Executive Director of the North Bay Labor Council, representing over seventy affiliates and over seventy thousand working families in the North Bay. We're here to stand in strong support of this ordinance, this urgency ordinance. Also our allies, the Canal Alliance and all those tenants and renters that are here from the OZ in the Canal area. They need your help and they need it now. I've been working diligently in Fairfax and Larkspur to make permanent change uh, in Marin and throughout the North Bay for these protections that we know are overdue and needed. If you read the staff report, which I know you have, you'll notice that um, the vast majority of renters in this OZ are rent burdened with over fifty percent of their wages going towards rent, that's unsustainable. Market forces have not, have failed us in this account. These landlords who are getting a benefit, a tax benefit from this OZ uh, really need to step up and stimulate the economy. I'm all for a tax benefit that stimulates the economy. I am not for a tax benefit that causes gentrification, that doesn't allow the renters to come back into their units once it's done. These renters are going to continue to pay their lease, they haven't defaulted on their lease. Uh, they've been model tenants in that regard and they should be uh, treated that way once these units are uh, brought back into uh, full service. So thank you for your time, I urgently requested you support this this evening, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Paulson, you can speak.
Hello, my name is Robbie Paulson and uh, I would like to uh, stand solidarity with the, some of the expressions I've made before that I think that this ordinance should have a stronger enforcement mechanism. And it should, right now as it's written, a tenant really only has a private right of action for wrongful eviction, but in reality a tenant can only enforce their rights under this ordinance after they've already been displaced. Now I'm here primarily for the next agenda item, the anti-camping ordinance. Uh, that will be displacing a number of uh, people that are living on, in their city of Francisco. Many of these people who have moved and are living in tents in those communities have been victims, just like the city official just said, I mean, these people become unhoused after they're displaced. And so how much harder if they're already getting displaced and they're in a tent? And then we have the city of San Rafael in the next few months displacing those people. I mean, how are they going to enforce those rights if they're not only just trying to survive but also having to deal with law enforcement and all these other problems? Uh, there should be, you know, a strong mechanism to keep people housed. And uh, so, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Anyone else like to provide comments on this item? Not seeing anyone, I'll close the public comment and there were several great questions and I'll read the ones that I have and we'll see if they match up. Um, the seventeen thousand dollar, does it increase over time? And then there was a later comment, there was a concern it wasn't enough, so maybe speak to both why that number and whether it can increase. Uh, the rent price, what would be the rent price upon return after displacement? The role of code enforcement in units, and these are kind of out of order but people brought in different things, so probably existing units and probably other units in Canal. The enforcement action, so there were quite a few comments about uh, the burden on the tenant. Um, the issue of educating tenants and having the information in accessible language, Spanish was mentioned, how are we going to do that? Uh, comments around the tenant registry, I know the county's doing that, but what would be the next steps around that? Why does this anti-displacement measure only focus on the opportunity zone? Why is this measure temporary? What will happen after twenty twenty-six? And I think it is important, even if questions have been asked prior, to repeat, because this is complicated issue. What happens when people return to a remodel unit? So I think the question's really around what's the price of rent? And then finally, um, the issue of, and it was mentioned 400 Canal, but your, the legal documentation is in English and not in Spanish and just, I'm not sure what the role is of us or the community members to um, bridge that disconnect that happens there. Okay.
Okay, so, uh, first question around, uh, does relocation, uh, do the relocation payments, that exist, um, existing relocation payments increase with inflation? So the um, security deposit amount in the first and last month's rent um, automatically increase? Uh, or they, they adjust every year based on the fair market rent for Marin County, which is pu, published by uh, the federal government? Um, there are other components that don't adjust automatically and so at some point we may be in front of your C, City Council proposing um, an adjustment, for example, to moving expenses, um, because that doesn't have an automatic adjuster. Um, if the tenant relocates temporarily, does the tenant pay market rate or they, do they pay the same rent plus some increase? They, um, if the tenant relocates during repairs and they continue to pay rent on their unit, um, they can come back under the same lease, they can return to the unit. Um, and the landlord can increase the rent um, under the state rent cap, whatever that maximum is in a twelve-month period. Right now it's at nine point two percent for Marin County. Um, Micah, do you wanna take the next one?
Um, regarding uh, code enforcement in terms of our inspection programs. Um, you, we do have a code enforcement program that does uh, respond to, you know, housing violations or, you know, substandard housing. So we will actually inspect those units uh, on complaints. We also do have what's called the uh, residential building record, the RBR reports, it's a code enforcement program. Uh, she runs through our building department also, where we inspect units when they're sold. So every time it, uh, there's a transaction occurs, we'll actually go, inspect the unit, confirm the permits that have been uh, pulled on that and, and confirm there's any violations or uh, unpermitted work contained within that unit. That's actually a pretty common program for Marin County, that's why we do pursue that, so that's what our response is for, for that item.
I just, I just wanna, so if someone's making a complaint to code enforcement, do they have to identify themselves or they Or they just identify the building? How does that work if someone's concerned about?
Our code enforcement complaints are not, we take that record, but they're not public in terms of who's making that complaint. So we're able to actually go and inspect that. But the violator, the person calling out a violation is confidential.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I'll talk about the next steps on the rent registry and then Nira, if you could do the one after that. So we will, as we mentioned, we're working on a community engagement plan and evaluation for citywide tenant protections per the housing element. And we will be bringing to your city council an evaluation of existing tenant protection policies in the city, which will also include a discussion of the data that's currently available and perhaps the data needs for the city. We're also in initial conversations about what kind of options could enhance the cities, the data that the city has available for making these decisions. And Nira, do you want to speak to the enforcement?
So the tenants do have affirmative defenses related to a failure of a landlord to provide proper notice and a failure of a landlord to pay required relocation assistance. Those affirmative defenses can be used in unlawful detainer actions. So where a tenant refuses to move out and stays in a unit until they are paid or provided proper notice regarding relocation assistance, they do have those options as affirmative defenses. So that will aid in a tenant's ability to stay in a unit where a landlord is unlawfully evicting or not paying relocation assistance properly. Was there anything you wanted me to address?
Okay. So a little bit about the outreach plan and materials. And so staff has prepared a one-page summary of the proposed ordinance that is available on our website in English, Spanish and Vietnamese in advance of the city council's consideration today. And then if the city council adopts this urgency ordinance, staff will develop additional outreach and educational materials in multiple languages. And the materials may include the ordinance components of the staff report or the staff report in its entirety. But we will be working on those materials. And the other question on notifying people. We'll be working with community partners to notify property owners and tenants about this ordinance. And the primary outreach effort will occur in the opportunity zone. However, all residents and community members will be able to access information about the policy on the city's website. And the city will be engaging San Rafael community members regarding citywide tenant protection policies per the housing element. Why is this just in the opportunity zone? And the proposed urgency ordinance is intended as a stopgap or interim measure to stem displacement in the Canal Opportunity Zone while the city conducts broader outreach and research and community engagement to determine citywide policies, which again is a commitment that's included in the city's housing element. And then if the tenant signed their lease in English, will they be able to get a notice in Spanish or another language? So the proposed ordinance requires the property owner to provide the notice of relocation in the same language as the rental agreement was negotiated. It's structured this way to provide clarity for the property owner in how to comply with the ordinance. To support property owners in providing accessible notices, staff plans to provide sample language on its website, on the city's website in English and Spanish. Did I miss any? Let me see. I think that's it. I think I got them all.
Just one more, just, why don't you just read it around the opportunity zone and why it's temporary and after 2026?
Oh, thank you. So the proposed ordinance would be in effect through December 2026. And this timeline is meant to align with the availability of tax incentives in the Canal Opportunity Zone. Again, it's intended as a temporary stopgap measure while the city evaluates citywide policies and conducts broad stakeholder engagement. And so before the urgency ordinance expires, we'll be coming back to council. We don't know yet what we'll be bringing forward to the city council because we need to do further evaluation and community engagement. But we will be coming back to council well in advance of December 31st, 2026.
Thank you. There might be additional questions from the council, so I will first just ask for questions and hold your comments. Additional questions, Vice Mayor Hill?
No additional questions, Mayor Kate.
Councilmember Kurtz.
I just, I appreciate the coming back before 12:31, 26. And I'm wondering if we need to actually make, formalize that within the ordinance? I'm just so concerned about the timing of how fast things are going. I don't want to delay where we are today by making any type of change. But I do, I am concerned that it's so quickly coming up. And I don't know if there's anything we can do. Because there's been, you know, I just, we say it, but then life happens and we don't, it doesn't come back.
We can commit to a date. I don't think it needs to be codified in the ordinance, but we can commit to something like at least six months in advance of the expiration. But we do need a little time, as Alexis said, to evaluate and consider the implications. There's a lot of very complex legal analysis that Nira has supported staff with that any expansion or permanency of this is going to need some due diligence around that. But a hundred percent, I hear where you're coming from and we'll make that commitment.
Thank you.
And it is part of our, part of it, of our approved goals and objectives for 2024, 2025. Additional questions, Councilmember Bushy? No. Councilmember Yuren Skoladi?
Yeah.
Additional questions?
Yeah, thank you. So going back to the enforcement, you mentioned that if somebody will actually had an issue with a unit that they could, you know, they could inform the city and it's anonymous. Does it have to be for a specific unit or could it be for the entire building? Because I think if you just go for that specific unit, it's going to be obvious that it's the tenant.
I understand that, that, I do think it is to a unit or what concerns they have on that. There might be other ways we can look to address that with property owner through other means. But it really is, we do recognize that there is concern from the, they're calling out. But really, it's hard when you have a 400, you know, like a 150-unit building. You know, we got problems in this building. So we have the ability to go through everyone and try and understand what's the real issue on that. We have received multiple code enforcement complaints related to housing conditions. And that's been a pretty successful program. We actually do go in those units. They're evaluated. Reports are made in terms of substandard elements, maybe broken windows or not working items. And those corrections are worked for the property ownership to actually resolve and they get resolved.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. I don't have any additional questions, so I will call on my colleagues to make closing comments. I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, and thank you, Alexis, for leading our conversation this evening. Thank you for all testimony that was given tonight, but also in previous nights from the community about the impact of displacement. What we're considering tonight is asking us to consider, is there an urgent issue and what urgent action would we take? To those, I would say that I'm convinced that urgent action is needed. And then as to the test of whether or not this ordinance will provide a mechanism to lead towards better outcomes for folks who live in the opportunity zone. I'm also convinced that we have achieved that this evening and I will be supporting this ordinance tonight. But I also want to say that this is, of course, not the end. Not just in San Rafael, not just in the Canal, across the United States. We are facing a housing crisis. It has been here for some time. It is worsening. To the degree that we can take intervention, I think we should take action where we can. But there are greater issues at play here and obviously we're looking for solutions with all of you. So thank you for all presentation this evening and testimony. I will be voting yes on this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuren Skoladi?
Yes, thank you. I concur with Vice Mayor that this ordinance helped stop the displacement. It's been extremely painful to see in the last three years how our neighbors were displaced. Although the city did the relocation assistance, which was like a big help, but that doesn't really solve the problem because people, you know, they cannot stay here. And our neighbors in the Canal, they are like the engine, the economic engine of Marin County of San Rafael. And I really, really appreciate our staff for being able to do this so quickly because we wanted to pass this ordinance as soon as possible. But especially our neighbors, I mean, I see so many leaders in the Canal that many of them are not even residents there, you know, in some of these buildings. The strength of the neighbors in 400 Canal has been amazing, forming the union and really have a voice, the support from Canal Alliance, Legal Aid, Community Action Marin and many other community partners. I mean, this is like a whole community to do what is right. And I will definitely fully endorse this ordinance. And I will say, in order to spread the word about this, we can definitely provide the information, but it would be great to have your help. You know, the community to help us really spread the word and make sure that everybody is aware and if this happens to them, that they can do something about it. So again, thank you. I feel very grateful to be in this community. And I think this is an amazing win-win for everybody for now and to be continued. There's more to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Yes, thank you and thank you for my fellow councilmembers' comments. I supported it as well. I think we're seeing some unintended but known consequences going through the opportunity zones. And we're living that now, where the opportunity zone sounded like a great idea and plan. Others and have identified that these are very significant to the community and destructive. We also are coming up on a very significant presidential election, which could change a lot of things for us. So again, that 26th date, we got to make sure that we're putting the protections into place right now. This as well as others to make sure our community can stay in their homes and support their families. So I'd say it's definitely urgent and definitely overdue. It's one protection that is needed and absolutely critical. And there are definitely more that we'll need to work on as we go forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I remain concerned about the scope of this ordinance. Displacement is a much bigger issue than just the opportunity zone. And I'm concerned that we're, in our focus on the opportunity zone alone, we're going to end up with a very small group of tenants that this will apply to, which will then in turn lead to a small set of data that we have at the end of this to study. And once more, that data will be arising in a unique factual circumstance. That is where there's this alternative seventeen thousand dollar plus permanent eviction amount that's out there that would not be otherwise available. So I am concerned that we're going to get a narrow set of data. It's going to bring us back on a showing that tenants are not interested in this type of an opportunity because, shouldn't use that word, this option, because they have an alternative option of a large cash payment. Though thus resulting, my concern is that this is setting us up for failure. That's my concern. That said, the tests may have heard tonight, particularly from the Canal Community Alliance and most particularly from its leader Omar Carrera, with whom I served on the General Plan Steering Committee that originated many of these ideas lo those many years ago in those, in those long Wednesday night meetings that we went to for over, over a year. If it appears to be the communities and their leaders' considered opinion that this option is advantageous, I'm willing to set aside my concerns and vote in favor of it with the understanding that there will be a broader perspective brought to the displacement issue that liberates itself from the opportunity zone, looks across the community, understands the litigation issues that are there and applies some creativity to understand exactly what this problem is and how we can actually solve it. But that's going to take good data and I hope we can get it somehow. Despite my misgivings about this method, maybe this will bring it forward. So those concerns stated, I support the measure.
Thank you and thank you of my colleagues for their thoughtful comments. And I'm just going to lean into the gratitude, the Canal Alliance, both the leaders and the Voces de Canal, the Community Action Marin, Legal Aid of Marin. We have been in collaboration and partnership with you very deeply, especially during COVID. We saw what we can do when we come together as a group and really hear each other and hear each other's concerns and talk about the things that we value, both as individuals and as communities. So tonight is happening because of the work that we started even years before COVID, but really was cemented during COVID. And then the collaboration has been brought forward for what we are considering tonight. And I agree that we need more tools, the renter registry, the landlord registry. We'll be working with our partners at County of Marin. I think the county has a role here. We didn't talk about them this evening, but we do talk about them and we'll continue to work with them because they're responsible for the county. And they also have resources and capacity that we just don't have here in the city. And it is really due to the incredible lift of our staff, of Alexis to Director Hinkle, to Nira and others for making this happen. And urgency ordinance is a big lift for the city and we're doing it because it's the right thing to do, because of its immediacy and we're responding to the moment. And going forward, we need more tools, we need more data. So it's not being reliant on an urgency ordinance. So we can actually have things in place that prevent displacement prior to it happening. So I really appreciate everyone who came down tonight, but really all the other nights that you have come and you've advocated for what is important to you and to your family and to our community. Let's be clear here. We are one community. We are in this together. And I appreciate your willingness to continue to talk with us and to work with us. Tonight, it sounds like we've got it right. Sometimes we might not, but to have that next conversation, to commit to being, to working together for future ordinances and future protections. So with an urgency ordinance, we do need a four-fifths vote. I think it's looking good, but I will ask for a motion from Councilmember Yuren Skoladi, please.
I will very gladly make a motion to adopt an urgency ordinance amending chapter 10.105 of the San Rafael Municipal Code entitled "Cause Required for Eviction" and amending chapter 10.111 of the San Rafael Municipal Code entitled "Relocation Assistant in Opportunity Zones."
Second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yuren Skoladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you all for being here this evening. There's another motion?
Yes.
Oh, I was, okay. We will take a break after we finish with the voting. So people can wander out if they don't want to stay for the next agenda item. So go ahead.
Second motion. So I make a motion to adopt a resolution, amending resolution 14895 to include temporary relocation assistance payment amounts and administrative processing fee pursuant to San Rafael Municipal Code, chapter 10.111, relocation assistance in opportunity zones.
A second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Councilmember Yuren Skoladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you all. We will take a five-minute break so folks can leave the chambers if they don't want to stay for the second item. Well, we can meet in five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Attorney, Jenemeep Corle, and I'm starting with City Manager, Kristi Nowovich.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I wanted to make a few opening remarks because tonight is about a new camping ordinance. But the staff is here. We're also here to give kind of an overall update about the state of homelessness in San Rafael. We, like many cities, continue to face a multifaceted challenge trying to solve homelessness, a challenge that affects the well-being and cohesion of our community every day. Despite significant efforts to address this issue over many years, some San Rafael residents still find themselves without stable housing, facing daily struggles for survival and dignity. This crisis not only threatens the safety and health of those currently experiencing homelessness, but it also strains our resources, impacts the ability for all to access our public spaces and hampers economic development in our city. I want to emphasize that we cannot do this work alone. We were just talking about partnerships and community. Our team is committed to continuing to work hand in hand with nonprofit service providers, advocates, community leaders, so that we can co-create solutions that uplift and support those in need. The bottom line is that we need more funding and it needs to be coming directly to San Rafael. Staff is going to share a little bit more about a $6 million state grant that we recently co-authored with the County of Marin. And in order to move the needle, we really need to see more direct funding coming directly to this agency. In crafting the proposed ordinance tonight, this required us to delicately balance the conflicting needs and concerns of our community members. One of our primary considerations in drafting this ordinance is the safety of individuals currently experiencing homelessness in the encampments as well as the community at large. Unregulating encampments often lead to dangerous conditions, including unmitigated fire risks and other public health and safety concerns. While we address immediate and urgent needs, we're also focusing staff resources toward long-term strategies that prevent homelessness and provide more pathways to housing with the end goal of having access to safe and stable housing for all. As it relates to enforcement of this ordinance, we believe in offering support, resources, and seeking voluntary compliance rather than relying solely on a heavy-handed enforcement approach. However, the city does need a regulatory framework and enforcement tools to protect the health and safety of our community when needed. We're committed to finding solutions that honor the dignity of every person living in San Rafael while at the same time preserving the accessibility of our shared public spaces for all to enjoy. One of the specific challenges we face right now is a shortage of interim shelter options in Marin County. In staff's presentation, you'll hear more about a safe sanctioned camping area the city will be opening in the next few months to address these urgent interim shelter needs. We're hopeful that if this ordinance is adopted tonight, it will allow us to redirect our energies, time and resources toward productive problem-solving that center the voices of the unhoused community with empathy and compassion as well as the voices of our local businesses and community members. Turn it over to you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the City Council. Thank you, City Manager Alilovich, for the opportunity. So I'm here today to talk about the state of homelessness in the city and the city's response. We're going to be talking about amendments to our ordinance that regulates camping, but we all know that regulating camping is not the city's goal here. It's very important. It's essential. We're responsible for safety in the city. But our response to homelessness is ending homelessness through developing housing and supporting people in getting there. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the types of things that we've been doing to try to help individuals in the encampments get to housing and what we plan to do. So the citywide response to homelessness, folks who have heard me present have seen this before and I won't read it because I want to talk about the recent and the near future a lot more. But we are really attempting to use every resource we can to increase the affordable housing, to manage the situation on the streets for individuals experiencing homelessness while they wait and while we work toward getting them into that housing. The SAFE team, for example, is an important initiative by which we work with individuals in mental health crisis, have a professional mental health therapist respond to them in lieu of a police officer when that's the indicated intervention. We have a team, including myself, my staff member here, Mel Burnett, Lynn Murphy, that's out trying to navigate people toward housing and work with the different agencies so that we have a good system of care response to navigate things with the county. We provide showers, the downtown streets team, and case management through a few different grant programs. And as a community, our excellent nonprofits and our county partners and the city together are solving homelessness every day. Since we did a system redesign in the year 2017, we have housed 728 individuals who are chronically homeless in San Rafael and Marin County. And that included 110 veterans. I think something very exciting for the community to know is that with the opening of the New Beginning Center and new veterans units, we expect to be one of the very few counties in the entire state that can say it has ended veterans homelessness by this time next year. We have served many families. We continue housing about 10 people per month. And we are extremely successful with making sure they never return to homelessness. Ninety-four percent of them remain housed. As one example, this city has two case management programs funded through grants, the High Utilizer Case Management Program with Downtown Streets Team and the Encampment Resolution Fund Program, where we take people from, in this slide, step one, where they don't have a relationship with anybody, they're not on the list for anything, through step four, when they are housed with support. In the two years that I've been, well, these grants have both been in effect, we've case managed 34 individuals. Twenty of them are in housing. Four of them are looking for housing right now. This is the type of support that our community and our partners are providing and that successfully ends homelessness. We're doing a lot of work, as everyone here knows, in the Mahone Creek area, which is shown here on this map. There's kind of three different major arms of this encampment. We have approximately 65 to 70 individuals staying in this area. And this was the subject of our Encampment Resolution Grant Program that the city manager just alluded to. Some really important recent developments in our management and our work with this encampment. In December 2023, the city conducted a needs assessment survey with this group of 65 to 70 individuals. And we got 60 responses on that survey, which is an extraordinary achievement that is really due to my staff member Mel Burnett and her incredible organization and the agencies that have been involved in actually delivering that survey for us. We really appreciate that. There is a detailed report on all of the results that we have, very good, very current information for our system and our community on the city's website for homelessness. In response to that survey, we deployed new health and sanitation measures in the encampments that were requested by the individuals staying in the encampments and that we believe are for the best interest of the health of the entire community. We put portable bathrooms, including ADA accessible ones, and hand washing stations throughout the encampments. We've been working with the Ritter Center to provide additional service and especially Spanish-speaking service in the encampments and reaching a lot of folks that did not previously have connection to medical care. Just last week, we coordinated again with our nonprofit and county partners, a coordinated assessment event. It is necessary for individuals experiencing homelessness to complete an assessment in order to get into the system that is the long-term queue for housing and the first step of their path to housing. After doing the survey, we realized that a lot of people either had done the assessment a long time ago and understandably forgotten about it, maybe needed an update, or people that had not ever taken it, even though they were right here in this area. And our goal, together with the county, is to have 100% of the individuals who are staying in the Mahone Creek area on that path to housing by getting this assessment. We completed 10 new assessments. We updated many more. We were able to get individuals again connected with food assistance, mental health care, and many other services through this effort. Finally, the results of the survey informed the design of a $6 million grant proposal that the city and county jointly made to the state's Encampment Resolution Fund in January. We were supposed to hear about it in March. I think they got a lot of applications and now they're telling us we'll hear about it this month, so we hope so. And I think that we're very optimistic about it. This would be providing a great deal of social services support to address the various gaps that we identified in the survey as well as provide all of the different types of rapid rehousing assistance, interim housing assistance, and the type of operational support that we need to be successful with opening a sanctioned camping environment for individuals to be navigated to services and to have that sense of security that we want for our homeless community to have. I am very optimistic about the proposal. I hope I hope that in looking at what we've accomplished here, that you and that the state understand that this is a system of care that's communicating well, that's effective, it's a group of individuals who are unhoused in the community but really wanting to get housing and are desirous of getting the kind of services we'll be able to offer. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Coyle.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about the amended ordinance. Before we get into the details of the ordinance, I just want to give you a summary of the current state of the law and how we got here tonight, where we're going to be proposing some amendments to our current or existing camping regulations. So as you know, in 2019, there was a seminal case in the Ninth Circuit called Martin v. Boise. And in that case, the Ninth Circuit determined that criminal enforcement of sleeping on public property by an individual who does not have alternative shelter available to them constitutes cruel and unusual punishment under the Eighth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. But I do want to point out that while that underlying determination was made by the court, the court was also very clear that cities still have a lot of latitude to regulate around the edges. And that includes regulating the time, place, and manner by which individuals would be permitted to camp or sleep on public property. Since that time, which is now five years, five years, there's been a host, as you can imagine, of dozens of cases that have come down, considering Martin v. Boise and then other details around activities or behaviors related to sleeping or camping on public property. This is just kind of a list, a sample of them. There's cases considering how to determine whether an individual is involuntarily homeless and whether the determination there is whether you have the number of homeless persons exceeds the number of shelter beds in a certain jurisdiction, or whether that analysis should be based more on the particularized individual circumstances. Also, the quality type of alternative shelter, whether personal property can be seized and the procedures around that. As I mentioned, the time, place, and manner restrictions. And then also whether a city has left open sufficient public property in a jurisdiction for the number of homeless individuals there in order to sleep. So this area of law is in a lot of flux considering the number of cases that are currently being litigated. And I did want to point out, and it's mentioned in our staff report tonight, that there is a case up at the Supreme Court. Now, it's going to be actually heard on oral argument next week. And that's the City of Grants Pass versus Johnson. And in that case, they will be considering the Martin v. Boise determination by the Ninth Circuit. So we'll be watching that case and then looking at the city's camping regulations in light of existing law. So almost a year ago now, in July 2023, you adopted a new regulation for camping on public property. And this was a time, place, and manner restriction for individuals sleeping in San Rafael on public property. And it was a novel approach. There's cities that have adopted kind of similar types of ordinances. But in our case, our ordinance, which is our existing ordinance, that's on the books today, the rule is that campsites cannot occupy more than 100 square foot for one person. Or if there's multiple people that want to sleep together or camp together, they can occupy a space no greater than 200 square foot. And then there's also a distancing rule whereby campsites must be separated by 200 feet apart from each other. And then there's some other kind of what I would call like buffer zones that are written into the ordinances or areas where camping is strictly prohibited. And one of the rules in there includes that individuals cannot camp within 100 feet of playgrounds. The ordinance was to take effect last August. But prior to the date of the ordinance taking effect, the city was sued. That lawsuit, which is Boyd versus City of San Rafael, is currently ongoing in the Northern District in the federal court. So we do not have a resolution on that case at this time. So back in October, in the Boyd case, Judge Edward Chen of the Northern District Court issued a preliminary injunction order. Preliminary injunction order will be in effect through the pendency of the litigation or until a further order of the court. So it is temporary, but it does apply to our current situation. And in that preliminary injunction order, the judge didn't permit the city to enforce our ordinance, but under modified spacing and distancing rules. And those include that we would permit up to campsites of a size of 400 square feet. So our current ordinance allows 200 square feet, so it would allow a double the size of a campsite and up to four persons, which would equal 100 square foot per person within a campsite. And then instead of being separated by 200 feet, he essentially cut that distance in half to 100 feet. But also, what was very significant about the order is that he also required the city to develop and execute on an allocation and registration process by which individuals would that the city would track where individuals were camping within the city so that they would know that they were not running afoul of the law if they were to camp at a certain spot in the city. We, since October, our staff, including Chris and Mel and his team, have worked tirelessly to execute on the preliminary injunction order procedures. And we found that the implementation is exceedingly difficult and challenging. And we've made very little progress to actually see any beneficial effects of the ordinance. There's numerous reasons for that. I will mention, one of the main barriers has been the number of requests that we've received under the Americans with Disabilities Act by individuals who are requesting more space than the 100 square foot that they're allotted. And each of those take an individualized assessment. So those have taken a lot of staff time as well. So we're continuing to litigate this case and we've been trying to resolve it. And that includes numerous meetings between city staff and representatives of the homeless community. So what we are proposing tonight is a pivot from where we were back in July and where we are today. And what we are proposing is an amended ordinance, which keeps some spacing and distancing rules, but aligns the rules to Judge Chen's order and also some other adjustments to the ordinance. So I'll talk about those details. So the ordinance is written substantively in three major parts. The first section lists public properties that are strictly prohibited to camping. Those sites are listed on the slide. So examples are open spaces and city parking garages. These sites, for the most part, have been prohibited to camping for years now. For example, open spaces, which are the kind of wildfire areas, you know, in the hills in San Francisco, are prohibited to camping because of the significant fire, wildfire risk. So these have been in the ordinance and we're not proposing any changes to them. With one addition here shown on the slide, and that is prohibiting camping within 250 feet of schools. And that is for the health and safety and protection of our children as they are at and near schools. The second section of the ordinance permits sleeping on public property by individuals who have no alternative shelter available to them. So that would include all of the public properties that are not prohibited under the prior section of the ordinance, which is most public properties in the city. So this slide here explains the changes to our distancing and spacing rules. So these are the time, place, and manner restrictions that we're proposing that we make some modifications to. So we talked about how the current ordinance regulates the size that an individual can take over when they're sleeping and camping on public property. And what we are proposing is that instead of 100 square foot for one person, that we would allow 200 square foot for one person. And then instead of a maximum size of 200 square feet, we would allow 400 square foot for up to four persons. So it's essentially almost doubling the size from what the current ordinance allows. And as I mentioned, the main reason for this, excuse me, is a number of individual requests that we're receiving under the ADA for more space. We've also had individuals say that if they have, for example, a 10 by 10 tent, then they have sort of no other room in the space to, you know, maybe have some other necessary personal property, like a bike or, you know, something else that they need in order to live. So that would allow double the size. But the intent there is that we would not have the number of procedural activities that Chris and his team need to do. So it would automatically be granted for that size. The next change is very significant. So instead of distancing campsites apart by 200 feet, we would separate, or require campsites to be separated by at least 10 feet. And the 10-foot rule comes from what we're describing as new set facts and clearances. So what we are proposing is that around any person's camping area, that they keep what is called a clear 10-foot zone around their area where they do not store or keep any items of personal property or any belongings. And so that 10-foot clear area would be a safe egress-ingress in and out of the campsite, as well as a fire-safe kind of zone around each person's area where they're camping. And then we also have a setback rule. And the 10-foot setback would apply from other persons' campsites, public utility infrastructure. So that would include, for example, stormwater drainage infrastructure, as well as electricity, things of that nature. And then also from private real property. The reason we are including private real property is the significant fire danger that we've experienced with campsites. We have experienced a number of campsites, I mean, excuse me, a number of fires within our encampments that have been very close to real property. We have had campers who have affixed their camp facilities on and attached them to private properties. And so we are needing to, for health and safety, criticals, health and safety, need to have a reasonable setback from those private properties. So that summarizes the changes to the time, place, and manner restrictions in the ordinance. And then lastly, there is a new section added in that, in this section specifies the violations and the enforcement procedures. I will say that this aligns with our standard practice and procedures. So this really just records what our standard practice is when we execute our enforcement of our camping regulations. So we do specify that no person may be charged with a crime for violation of the ordinance unless their conduct is knowing or willful. And then we, as standard practors, always issue a warning and notice prior to enforcement that notice will include, will describe the actions that the person needs to take to comply. It gives them a timeframe to comply. There's, it specifies what potential penalties would apply for failure to correct the, to correct what's in the notice. And then there's also guidelines that are issued for removal and storage of unattended personal property. And then we do have a specific procedure that if a person is noticed for violation of our campsite size, occupancy, or clearance and setback violations, that they can request that the city provides a physical demarcation of the boundary. So for example, if they are noticed for a campsite where their personal belongings are taking over a larger than a 200-square-foot space, that we would mark out, help them mark out where the 200 sort of feet would be on the ground, which will help them come into compliance within the notice timeframe.
So if the council decides to pass this and then we begin to implement it, we will definitely be doing a lot of work to inform individuals there, as Genevieve alluded to, and educate people on how to comply with the new ordinance, exactly what the rules are, and to show them, including with marking on the ground, exactly where it is that their items need to be. We also work with all of the different service agencies. We've done events. I think it particularly deserves calling out the Marin County Lived Experience Advisory Board, which is a committee of individuals who are formerly homeless or are experiencing homelessness right now and advise jurisdictions on policy. We've developed a really good relationship and they've been very generous with their time to the city in talking through implementation matters, helping us promote our survey, many other items. So I think that it's important to just note that we have come a long way in terms of this, doing events, providing information on our webpage, including a map, including other information and policies, and making sure that that gets into the hands of the individuals who need to follow it, including in both English and Spanish, of course. With that.
Yeah, I just wanted to also mention that if you introduce the ordinance this evening, that it will require a second reading, which would happen at our next regularly scheduled meeting on the first week of May. So the ordinance would go into effect in the first week of June 2024.
Thank you for that presentation. I'm sure we'll have questions from my colleagues, so we'll start there. Vice Mayor Hill, questions?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Assistant City Attorney Coyle and Assistant Community Development Director Hess for the presentation. It wasn't mentioned in the staff report, but I remember going back to July of last year. One of the hypotheses of the original ordinance was to create more safety because calls for service had been on rise. I didn't hear much in the report about calls for service. Can one of you comment on where we've been with calls for service and how are we connecting this proposed ordinance to improving calls for service? Because I appreciated the context that there is a, there's a wider issue here. This is not the only thing we're focused on. There is a severity of, I'm getting a sense of, calls for service. We want to create more safety. There's clearly more action around how are we actually connecting? There's clearly more action around how are we actually connecting people with with shelter?
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Hill. Calls for service, we did not put a hard number in there. What we find is that most calls for service in San Rafael are what we call self-initiated calls, which means that we are proactively out there doing work in the community. The police department is proactively involved. There have been some different calls, including some significant and serious safety incidents that resulted in fire and police calls in a rather sporadic basis. They're from a, you know, particular business there that that has commented on this ordinance. They described a bit of what they experienced there. And I think that the involvement of our outreach and the various agencies has been to really try to kind of take a harm reduction approach to some of these matters, such as people, you know, cooking over an open fire when there's something flammable around and really trying to get people to not do that, to find other alternatives, for example, to just talk to individuals that might be in conflict with each other and try to get them to separate from one another. This type of a thing to be a little bit more preventative. Nonetheless, we have not been able to implement that ordinance that was for spacing and distancing. And so the experiment of spacing people out and trying to offer more safety because of a unconcentrated encampment never was able to be tested.
Got it. Thank you. And so with the introduction of 10 feet, can you comment on that? I mean, I can, I think we all, in this room and for folks watching, have a sense of what 10 feet is. Why are we landing on 10 feet? I'm sorry, I'm not being specific. I see 10 feet in a lot of different parts of the ordinance, so I'm just focusing on that distance specifically.
Yeah, I can speak some to that. 10 feet is typically a, what would be considered a kind of a fire core, fire safe corridor, which is really the, where that distance is is coming from. We're also keeping in mind Judge Chen's procedures and allocation procedures whereby he had expressed concern that if individuals were spaced too far from one another, that they would not know whether they might be in violation of the ordinance. And so the 10-foot is also clearly a distance by which a person could visibly see whether they are in compliance with the ordinance and can easily, you know, shift where they may be laying down for the night based on the distance to somebody else. So it's it's also based on just a, an easy visual assessment, which then the city would not have to be executing on a, on a allocation and registration process.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then as far as the timeline, so I heard description of, you know, if this change, the ordinance is passed, there's a second reading, goes into effect in June. Can you describe between now and then, we continue to work under the the PI that Judge Chen has implemented? And then is that, I mean, can you walk through what are the probable steps that can happen in that timeframe and then beyond in June?
So I think the, so the PI, which is the preliminary injunction order from the Boyd case, will still be in effect until and unless the the judge in that case pulls his order. And because it has not been a sort of successful model that we can have been able to enforce our camping ordinance, we're going to be focusing on outreach and education and voluntary compliance with our new ordinance, which will be enforceable in early June. So the concentration, I believe, in the field will be really more about our new ordinance procedures.
Okay, one more question, and it's more of requesting an opinion. Do you feel that this ordinance is more permissive for occupants?
So based on what we have determined from the judge's order in Boyd case, I would say legally, yes, that is a, one of the major considerations with the new structure and policy in the ordinance.
Thank you.
I just want to add one thing, Vice Mayor Hill. To your broader question about, you know, what are we going to do between now and then? Not directly related to the implementation of the ordinance, but the staff are working on standing up a sanctioned camping, a safe camping area, which is going to take a lift and hopefully we'll get the grant funds to support it. But we do have some grant funds from the second round of the encampment resolution funds that we're using to plan for that. So part of the outreach and education will be kind of talking to folks about what that opportunity will look like. We'll provide an alternative shelter option. And we can't promise that we'll have that stood up by the time this ordinance would be in effect if it's approved. But we're working diligently to that end as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, how about you? Any questions?
Yeah, just a few. So while you're focusing your attention on a camping ordinance that hopefully will be easier to enforce, what else are you going to be doing on, because there are, I'm specifically very interested in the rather major structures that have appeared, particularly those that are interconnected with private property. What's, what's the game plan there?
So thank you, Councilmember Bushy. This has been a, a real effort of ours over the last three weeks to outreach the various owners of those structures and attempt to get voluntary compliance with incentives, because that is essentially what we have the power to do right now. I would say that we received a lot of maybes. We received several noes and a couple of yeses. So there are going to be some structures that are going to be coming down and surrendered with a tent offered in exchange. In general, most of this last year, because we have been under injunctions and orders, we have been implementing most everything that we do in this fashion of incentives and voluntary compliance. So I imagine that that is something that will continue. It's really not a city that even was enforcement-first set of practices even before any of this occurred. And certainly now, that's, that's, that's what we're working on.
So I'm hearing it's not enforcement-first, it's enforcement never. Is that what you're saying?
You, you asked about the next few months while the ordinance is coming into effect. That was what I was referring to. We, we are under the injunction, the PI order currently. And so we're doing voluntary compliance because that's what's available to us under that order.
So it's your understanding that the, the city can't do anything. We can't enforce our, our health and safety. We can't, we can't enforce any of those other laws. People can start bonfires on wherever they want and build jungle gyms.
Yeah, let me clarify. So what Mr. Hess is referring to is that the preliminary injunction order constricts what the city can do with regard to its camping regulation. It does not impact the city's ability to enforce other codes. For example, fire code, a building code or encroachment or other parks codes that regulate any other activities that are occurring on public property. So we do have the ability to enforce on other, other elements of our code that are not specified in our camping regulations. So for example, we did do a enforcement of structures at the encampment last
November.
November. And we were able to remove many of the structures that had been built at that time. And so we're, now that we're at a point where we're proposing this new camping ordinance, we're also going to be looking at our other codes for the enforcement of, of structures. I will also mention you, you had raised the issue of the structures that are close to private properties. If they are within a 10-foot distance of a private property, then that would overlap with the camping ordinance, because the camping ordinance does not allow any person to camp within 10 feet of a, 10 feet of a private property. So that would be another basis by which the city would have some enforcement tools in those zones.
And when pray tell, would the city plan to exercise those tools?
Pardon me. As Chris mentioned, we're going to do this voluntary compliance. We're going to do incrementally. We're going to make as much progress with all the folks that are on the path in that regard. And then we will provide notices of enforcement. The staff are doing some evaluation of what, what does that process look like? And make sure there's proper noticing. And so staff have to do that work so we can get to the point of doing that piece of it. So it's hard to pinpoint like an exact moment in time, but it's weeks, not months.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yorenz Gulati.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for working on this and navigating all the complexities. So I guess one of the questions I have is like, what happens if somebody, so, so somebody, like with the veterans, I know there is like a new house in development right now. Or like if somebody is offered a house and they refused? What happens then? Can they continue camping or can they just, hey, we offer you a house and you refused?
Yeah, I, I think this is a good question. We have not made an attempt to evict someone from a camp on public property on the basis of this notion that they, you know, chose to be homeless by not accepting some particular housing. What it, I, I believe that this is a matter that's also under litigation in San Francisco, not a settled law that we actually have the right to do that. And, and I think that Genevieve could speak better to that.
Yeah, it was, one of my slides earlier had listed some of the types of cases that we're working through the court system. And one of them, like Chris mentioned, that's out of San Francisco is the question of alternative shelter and whether that is, whether the benchmark for that is whether there's more shelter bed, enough shelter beds in a city to accommodate all of the homeless individuals who are sleeping on public property. Or is it like you just asked, whether it's particularized to a certain person's circumstances if that person denies the shelter? It is a, still an unsettled area of law. I will say that in practice, what the city does, and it's working through the county and the coordinated entry system, is that if a person declines shelter, there, there is somebody else who, you know, it will go to. So in that respect, the, the shelter bed is getting, getting filled by a, by a willing and, another willing and ready person.
And I'll just add, that, that's in part due to the, to the lack of that, that interim shelter and alternative shelter that we have right now. But I would also say that I think part of the reason it's complex legally is that not all housing options, you know, as you know, are considered equal or appropriate for, or necessarily like an ideal housing situation, given the person's unique circumstances. So I think it's very hard to define, you know, if you, if you, if you turn, if a unhoused individual turns down a housing option, it may not be because they don't want to be housed. It might be that particular situation really isn't going to work for them in the long term, based on their, you know, experience. So I think we'll continue to track that and, and understand what options are available.
Okay, thank you. So with this ordinance, if, if there is, we don't know what are the, you know, the unintended consequences of the ordinance. So let's just say that in the near future, there is like another area that becomes like a problem, right? Because right now we are very focused on Mahone Creek. How much flexibility do we have to say, you know what, this has become a problem and we need to do something about it?
So we designed this proposed ordinance with all of the city of San Rafael in mind. That's why the pivot, as Genevieve mentioned, to kind of setbacks and buffer zones and thought about how that would apply to, for example, all the schools across the city. So that as challenges arise and if encampments were to appear in other places, that we'd still have the buffers and setbacks that are in the proposed ordinance to help mitigate for those impacts.
Okay, and, and I have expressed before my concern for District One, because it's pretty much carried the load of, of the situation and specific neighborhoods where they only have one green zone. That would be a disaster, you know, if that would happen. So that's why I'm expressing my concern about that. My last question, just clarification. When you are describing the map that is required by the judge, you're just talking about the map in the area of Mahone Creek, correct?
Yeah, the map that Chris was referring to is the procedure that Judge Chen required of in the former ordinance or in the currently existing ordinance, that if we wanted to enforce and implement that ordinance, that we had to have a camping registration and a map where people were pick which spot.
Right.
We've since kind of abandoned that approach, as the staff mentioned, was not feasible to implement. So that map is, is almost a moot point at this point. And it was only for the Mahone Creek path area encampment.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Just one question, and thank you for the update and the reports. The amount of time and effort, not only talking about this ordinance, but all the work is commendable. Thank you. This ordinance that we're looking at tonight, what are some of the other areas in jurisdictions? Not necessarily in Marin County, but anywhere similar, different, comparable in terms of the language and the work that we're doing here?
Just to clarify, are you referring to the, the policies and the language around the ordinance itself?
Yes.
Yeah. I'd say it's, it's kind of a combination of, of what I've seen. There are jurisdictions who adopt buffers. So for example, certain distances from schools, playgrounds and other sensitive receptors. Some jurisdictions have those models. Some jurisdictions, the last time I checked, I don't want to be, I don't know exactly as of today what some of them are. But the last time I checked with Sacramento, they have a spacing and distancing policy as well. I believe it was about 50 feet the last time I checked. Our original ordinance was based off of City of Elk Grove, which also had a spacing and distancing ordinance as well. So I think that each jurisdiction is, like I said, we have these time, place and manner abilities to, to regulate. And so we're all looking at our, our areas and determining what's going to work best for our situation. And so I'd say ours is kind of a, a hybrid of what I've seen.
Right, but we're not creating a new wheel here.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of follow-up questions. And I know it's not the ordinance per se. So we had the service support area a year ago when we, or two years ago. And of course, when we created it, we got sued and then when we took it down, we got sued. But having said that, the legal issues aside, what was the success rate for the folks that were in there? Because I, that is part of what we're talking about, is looking at setting up something. And if I recall, we got a lot of folks, we, the collective, we, the safety net housed folks out of there. Could you speak to that?
Definitely. Thank you, Mayor Kate. The results were extremely good, considering in particular that we're serving a population with really profound challenges with this program that's still about a little more. That's still about a little more than two-thirds are now in housing and no longer homeless. There were 47 individuals who participated and at our last count, 35 of them have been housed. The very vast majority of them keep their housing and continue on in services because these things really tend to improve once, once we're able to get people off of the street.
Thank you. No, it's a great data point. Two more questions. So like my colleagues, I get many emails and people have great concern about the amount of items that are outside of an area of a tent. And I know we are talking about the buffer zone, but I'm curious about the enforcement of that because I think there's a belief, there's a different perception as to what someone might see as a possession or someone might see as something as debris. Could you just speak to that?
Yes, definitely. Some of the individuals with a vast amount of property, they, you know, may be having some challenges with mental health that result in that. And the fact is that this is a very hard thing to work on, even when people are in housing and you have certain codes and just the four walls. It becomes a great deal harder when they're outdoors. And I've been trying to employ various organizations that are specialists in this area. And I've yet to find anyone who really is willing to take on from a therapy standpoint, the type of situation that you're describing. What we're hopeful for is that the square footage requirement, maximum of a campsite is an objective standard to try to hold people to. If they can fit their items within this, we're not judging. If they cannot, then they have abandoned property and then we're going to have to go through our procedures, which could include removal. We're, we've been in this process. We are finding it very challenging, but again, really trying to work with individuals and get to, get to know some of the people that are causing more of, of this problem in order to try and break through. Yes. So additionally, as the city manager, Alilovic reminds me, we have a policy with San Rafael Police Department for storing people's property for 90 days at the city's expense whenever we have a situation of abandoned property that they want to keep or any type of relocation. We do so at an off-site facility that SRPD holds and manages at the courtyard. And individuals can store up to two of the very large, like 50-gallon plastic bags. We will, we have standards about what we will and won't take. If it's hazmat or illegal, for example, we can't take that. And, you know, we've, we've had, we've had folks take us up on that offer sometimes.
Thank you. And then I have one last question. So Martin versus Boise really changed the landscape of this conversation. So as you alluded to, or as you said during your staff presentation, the grants pass case is going to be, go to oral argument. I don't even understand how the whole federal court works. But having said that, what I'm curious about is if there are changes that come down through the Supreme Court, how immediate are those effects or how, if there's additional tools, let's say that the Supreme Court somehow enables through their, through their legal decree, how immediate would other jurisdictions like San Rafael be able to revise or amend any current ordinances? Because the landscape will have changed.
I think my best answer to that is it depends. On what comes down from the Supreme Court. But if there was, yeah, I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to say. I think if there was, for example, like the rug pulled out of, you know, Martin v. Boise, that's a pretty significant change to, to law. And what I can say for what we would plan on doing from a staff perspective is that we would reevaluate, you know, our regulations in light of what's coming down from the Supreme Court and considering time and what's going to be allowable under the law. And also considering our, our homeless community here and what's going to work best from a health and safety and community perspective. And we would be prepared to, to present something to you if, you know, there's changes that we want to propose.
So if they're hearing, and, and again, I forgive my ignorance when it comes to the Supreme Court. So if they're hearing oral arguments, if there is significant changes, is that something that could come as early as the summer? That San Rafael, we might be looking at something different?
I, I would say as soon as June is what I would predict, but it could be very much later in the year. We are expecting a decision this term, but that's, yeah, we, we don't know.
It's a significant piece on the horizon. So, okay, thank you. There might be other questions that we, the council has after hearing from the public. So I will open the public comment on this. If you're interested in speaking to the council, now is your chance. Come on down. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. This is the first time I've been in front of a city council, so, yeah. I've heard a lot about concerned, sorry, concern for the homeless people and the plight that they're in. What I haven't heard much of is what is the impact on the community of these, these proposed regulations? Specifically, has any evaluation been made of the impact on property prices around these camps that are now going to move from one person to 10 people or two people to 20 based on the new spacing that we've, we talked about? So that would be one question. And the second would be, has, is there any legal liability that San Rafael City Council would have based on overriding what the Judge Chen specified and coming up with our, with, with San Rafael's overridden requirements? And, and tying, tying into the previous question? So that would be the two. And then the second, sorry, the third one would be as far as the Supreme Court of the United States evaluating this in April. Apparently what the, the real concern is, is what is the definition of cruel and, and unusual punishment? And that may, as far as the reading that I've been, I've been, what I've read about it, that the definition might actually change depending on what was previously there as far as what was allowed beforehand. So has, would it make sense for us to look at waiting until such time as the Supreme Court comes up with their decision before actually implementing something that could actually hold us to a particular position based on what we've considered to be cruel, unusual, and unusual punishment? So that would be that.
Thank you for your comments. And I'll just remind people, you're not required to, but if you could state your name and if you live in San Rafael, that would be appreciated. That's okay. I know, I know, but there might be some other folks who haven't spoken before. Thank you. We like to know who's speaking in our chambers, but you're not required.
My name's Robbie Paulson. And I think the, there's some improvements in this ordinance. But I'm concerned because I took a measuring tape out to Anderson and Francisco the other day and I, I counted that there's about 35 campsites that will be displaced. And I don't see what exactly the, the plan to mitigate the danger that Judge Chen found. And if you look at the ERF funding that the city sent, you know, for the ERF grant, outreach and case management is supposed to begin in August. And so now there's, all of a sudden, we're going to have all this disruption. And people, people's lives being uprooted, you know? Mary, you, you were talking about jungle gyms, you know? One of those people over there on Francisco, he just died, you know? And you've got a smile on your face. And that's, that's the problem, that all of a sudden, when people are unhoused, it's like their humanity starts to disappear. And I'm glad that, that individual came up because when he talks about housing prices, let's think about that. There's a reason why there's a lot of people that are homeless. Housing is too expensive. Housing is too expensive. That has been caused by city councils like San Rafael for years. And property owners get all the benefit. And the real issue with this ordinance right now is this 10-foot setback. 10-foot setback. What's the purpose of that? You've, you've, you've said fire, you've said, but how does that affect the fence? How does that make sense? If people's lives and safety are going to be put at risk, you don't address it or we're going to be in the same situation because a lot of people are going to be impacted and displaced.
Thank you, Ms. Paulson. If you could wrap up your final thoughts? Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome.
My name's Anchor Ardenland. I live on Anderson. And I would like to say, after reading the ordinance, you know, that Chris and Christine put together, I've been through all the proceedings, including District Nine with Judge Chen. So I'm familiar with, with the board here. And I'd have to say personally, I wasn't disappointed when, when the new ordinance came out, I read it. And, you know, being, having, having that space and then having 10 feet apart. Basically, overall, is what I'm saying is I see them doing their job in, in a way of being very thorough. So, you know, me being out there and being in the trenches, being on Anderson, you know, there's, 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 there's a lot to complain about, but there really isn't when you have, you know, SSA where I was before, we didn't have this. We didn't have this ability to come up to City Hall and talk to them or, or meet with them. So, you know, we all know what the bigger picture is, is to get people housed, you know? And, you know, we all know that the structures are not very pretty and, and, and no one wants to see a bunch of different types of tents around in Marin County. No one wants to drive by and see that. With the structure that we have going on right now, I see it elevating into, you know, something that we can work with and the structure is just getting better. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you for your comments.
Jason from Bristol Park. I want to point out that, you know, a lot of people, a lot of unhoused people do not turn down housing. Housing is very unavailable right now. It's, comes with vouchers, it comes with, you know, availability. And so when somebody, you know, can't, you know, they can't get arrested for not turning down housing when there's not even any housing. And so I know most of the camp in San Rafael are in coordinated entry. In fact, all over Marin, there's like, you know, 1,500 people in coordinated entry, which is the first step for housing. 800 or so are, are prioritized. So, you know, service providers are doing their job, they're doing what they can. I know cities are having, you know, tough times and it's very difficult. But, you know, you're, you're proposing to pass this ordinance when, when, when the grants pass ruling is coming right down the pike. And it seems like you're waiting for that to be a tool to, well, I'll let you know, if grant pass flips, you know, that's going to open up cities to use, you know, a new ordinance to criminalize homelessness. And we don't want to see people criminalized for homelessness just because of their social status. And so I would really hope you take that into effect and, and try to do what you're continuing to do is try to give people services, but, you know, don't use that as a tool because I don't think any of the service providers that are doing all the hard work out there and, you know, advocates, none of them want to see people get criminalized for being poor. And so I really hope that you hold back on that and continue the path that you're going.
Thank you, Mr. Sarris.
Can I have that you pull up that slide?
Sure. Sir, if you could come to the microphone would be great. Yeah. I, I know, but come to the microphone. No, I know, but just so it's recorded. Thank you.
Got it.
Yep.
So I, I want to walk over there and just point something out real quick.
Or you can take the microphone with you, just because we, we need to have it recorded. I know it seems very logistics oriented. And if you could just, if you're interested in saying your name and if you're in San Rafael.
I, I didn't know the microphone was mobile.
Yes, it is.
So my business is right here, right there. We are literally surrounded. I, I would encourage everybody on the city council, everybody on the city staff, I walked this today from here all the way down and then it actually all the way down Francisco Boulevard. It, it's tough. We absolutely want to, to solve the homeless problem. But to answer a couple of questions, so again, my office is on the backside of that building. Outside the window of my office is a tent. It's about this far away. And I can hear the people in the tent talking while I'm trying to hold business meetings and all this, so. I just wanted to take advantage of that map. My name is Jay Ress. I'm the general manager for East Bay Tire Company. About two and a half years ago, East Bay Tire bought an existing automotive repair and tire business in San Rafael, Brandon Tire. Brandon Tire had been in business in San Rafael for over 50 years and was one of the original tire shops in Marin County. Over the years, time took its toll on Brandon Tire's facility and the interior and exterior of the building were in need of substantial updates. As soon as East Bay Tire took over the business, we began investing in building repairs, paint, parking lot resurfacing, clearing out many old shipping containers and a complete refresh of the interior of the building. Today, 773 Lincoln Avenue looks completely different than it did two and a half years ago. I would encourage all of you to come down and experience the modern conveniences that we have, we have put into this building. Our address, as you saw on the map, is adjacent to the Mahone Creek Path between Lincoln Avenue and Anderson Drive. A chain link fence separates our property from the path. When we, when we moved into the facility and began renovations, the Mahone Creek Path was a scenic view from our parking lot. It was a, it was a plus.
If you could just make a few more comments, I know what, the two minutes goes fast. If you could just finish your comments.
Okay. I, I, I've got a lot to say here.
So why don't you make two more points? And then if you have it written, you can give it to the city clerk or you can send an email and I can assure you, the council will read it as well as staff.
Okay.
I can assure you.
Thus far, we've invested, without going into all of the incidents that have happened with everything thrown at the building, glass, metal, knives, all that, we've invested nearly three-quarters of a million dollars into our business and we have yet to turn a single month's profit. If the situation doesn't change soon, we're going to have to close the business. We moved into San Rafael largely because the reputation the city has had in supporting the business community. But with the current situation, that reputation's being completely ruined. And I think the city is doomed to more people leaving.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Do you want to hand?
Thank you.
Okay. Want to hand your, yeah, and she can scan it and share it with us. Thank you. Anyone else like to provide comment? Speaking of the business community, welcome, Director Strollia.
Hello. Hello, council, city staff. My name is Karen Strollia and I'm the president and CEO of the San Rafael Chamber of Commerce. And this conversation is really challenging because my previous life was serving the unhoused community and really making sure that they were taken care of and housed. And in that work, I saw the incredibly passionate staff and council really working to support not only the nonprofits, but also the people who are in the experience. Now that I'm in a new space and I've got a different lens to consider, I still see the city showing up the same way with great intention, trying to be mindful of the people who are in the experience and doing their best to also be mindful of the businesses that are being impacted by, by this situation. This is a humanitarian crisis and we are seeing it impact not only the individuals who are sleeping outside, not only the businesses, but also those of us who live here and our kids who have grown up here and our streams and our creeks. And it's impacting a lot more than just what we're, what we've talked about today. And it's impacting a lot more than just what we're, what we've talked about today. The Chamber is incredibly impressed with the work that the city has done. Do we feel that this is the, the ultimate solution to how we end and wrap up the experience of homelessness for our people in our community? No, but this is a step in the right direction. And the one thing again that I've seen in my tenure in this, in this town is consistency and intention. Consistency in knowing when things need to pivot in a different direction to have greater change. And I don't anticipate that to be any different as this, this ordinance is put into place. In my last seven seconds, I will just, my hat goes off to you guys. This is not an easy task and to you all as well. I know our community is greatly impacted by this. And as long as we're in it together, I think we really are one community and I think that's where we started this meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. And you can meet each other. Anybody else like to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone else, I'm going to close the public comment. I heard a couple of questions and maybe I added one of my own. So one is about the, if there's been evaluations of the financial impacts of surrounding properties, which is a hard question, I think. Do you want to hear your answers? And then the legal liability of violating federal court orders. The waiting for a Supreme Court and around the definition of cruel and unusual punishment, that was a very scholarly question. So I know Assistant City Attorney Corral will answer that one. And then the last one, there was a comment about coordinated entry for folks on Mahone Path. And if you could clarify, because I think there was public testimony about the number of people that are receiving help. And I actually think that's not what we found in the needs assessment, but I was hoping you could confirm that.
Happy to go first. Yeah. So I'll, I just want to make one kind of overall comment about really the intent of this ordinance compared to where we are today. And this gets to the legal liability. We're in a position now where under the court order, we really are, our hands are tied and we're not really able to do much of anything in terms of enforcement under the current order. So the intent here is to get a law that we can execute on, at least as a stopgap measure, until something, you know, better comes along. But that should mitigate the current situation down there now. And we recognize that, you know, having tents that are, you know, close to or attached to fences of neighboring businesses, we, we can't allow to have, continue for a number of reasons, most of which are the health and safety and, you know, sort of the immediate community impacts and, and fire dangers. So this is a way of changing, you know, our policy to kind of right fit where we're seeing the court is going to allow us to enforce something that's going to improve in the conditions down there and have more control over, over the situation, which, which we don't have today. And us, the, the, the regulatory mechanism that we're using is our general police powers for regulating activities on public property. So that is where our, you know, the, the legal liability, as long as we're regulating activities on public property, which is what we're doing. And we've got now guidance from the court as to what is going to be allowable, that this should be something that's going to be workable going forward. There was a question about waiting until after Martin v. Boise. It's, it's really, right now, we're proposing to change it because we kind of are at that critical situation where we're seeing that this is not working for the community, both those in the encampments as well as the community neighbors. So this is really about just getting something on as quickly as possible. And then we can always reassess at a later date after Martin v. Boise.
So I would add to that. There was some questions about the financial impact and the impact on business. I, we're, we're very aware of this. You know, we've spoken many times with the different highly impacted businesses down there. I, I think that a lot of the motivation of this council and the staff in the original design of the ordinance was that we wouldn't have such concentrated impacts where we ask far, far too much of a few residents and businesses. But that does not seem to be achievable at this moment. And so this is what we can do and we're hopeful to be able to implement this, continue working with the businesses. When there is a sanctioned camping program, I think the experience of the businesses in the neighborhood and the residents will be far different. There will be 24/7 staffing. There will be somebody to call. There will be a perimeter around this with no camping. And it will be a professionally run operation with a nonprofit and a security team that's experienced in doing this with the population. So some of the, not all, but some of the concerns that residents are bringing, I think, will improve under that type of a model. Also, we wanted to hear a little bit about the coordinated entry and just clarification on that. We're up over 75% of our encampment residents now enrolled in coordinated entry. And we've come a very long way since just December and that's really great. There is more to go. That last 25% is by far the hardest. There are people moving in and out of the encampment at all times and that makes it hard to really get to 100%. Nonetheless, that's our goal. I think the constituent addressed the fact that there are about 1,500 people on coordinated entry in Marin. That is a countywide number. That is correct. That does not necessarily indicate something about their current status. In most cases, they are probably homeless and looking for housing in Marin. In some cases, individuals may be on the list but have resolved their homelessness, left the area or are, are otherwise not actually in need. We are waiting on the 2024 homeless count numbers to come back. We conducted that in January. Those should be coming anytime. And we'll see exactly where the overall homeless population in the county lies from the, the perspective of when we all went out there and literally counted every street of the entire county as we do once every two years.
Thank you for answering those questions. Do you have an additional question? Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Two follow-ups. And I, I want to just share when people in the public hear the words, "our hands are tied", I want to just elaborate, have you elaborate a little bit further on what that means? Because I often get comments from the community, "Well, just do this." And I think sometimes it's hard to convey and communicate what "hands tied" actually means. And so I'm going to actually attempt to maybe elaborate and you can correct me where I get it wrong. We live inside of a system of laws. And when the judicial element comes in and says, "You are now inside of the constraints of a preliminary injunction order", can you describe what that means? What, really describe those constraints? And, and I am going to challenge a little bit and push further to say, this is counterfactual to who we are. We follow the law, but if we were, counterfactually, not to follow the law and just violate what a judge were to order, what are the consequences?
So I'm going to start kind of broadly and then I'm going to turn it over to Genevieve to get into the, the deep legal question around, around the PI. We said this before, but I think it's really important to reiterate just in simple terms. When we say our hands are tied, that, and Martin v. Boise, and I, I spoke to this earlier, because we don't have alternative shelter options available for people, we cannot clear the encampment, no matter how significant the impact currently. And, and that is really where we say our hands are tied. There's multiple layers of it, but the very big broad brush is why, why can that person exist there? It's because we don't have anywhere else to offer them. So that, that's the simple version of our, our hands are tied. It gets more complex with the current litigation. So I'll turn to Genevieve to cover that part.
So I think just in most simplistic terms, the preliminary injunction order is a legal order from an officer of the court that is telling us what we can and cannot do under the law. If the city were to violate it, we could be held in contempt of court and it would, we absolutely cannot do that. So we have to follow what the judge is saying.
Just to expand, I mean, we, we could be the subject of fines. You know, contempt of court is not a place that a city wants to be. And, you know, I would just add that long before Martin versus Boise, because this is an issue that, that the city's been struggling with for many, many years. I've been city attorney now for 17 years, I think. I think this is my 17th year. And even before we had the constraints of the law and the preliminary injunction and everything we're talking about tonight, we had the constraints of our local judicial system. So when we had our old camping ordinance and our other quality of life ordinances, as they were called, that we were attempting to enforce against when our police officers would cite people, there was a, a lot of challenges in our local court system in terms of, you know, achieving results that would abate the issue. And so I return to what Christine just said, that the real hands being tied is the, the resources, the, the need that people have in the community for the housing. That's where the focus and effort needs to continue to be. Because even if the law permitted it, locking people up doesn't work. And, and the courts don't want to see those cases. The district attorney doesn't want to see them. The, the judges don't want to see them, even if we were empowered to bring cases like that right now, which we aren't. So I hope that helps with your question.
It does. And, and I'll, we're not in comments yet, but I just had one more question that's related, which is, when is, when do we expect the next either permanent supportive housing or interim shelter to come online to create more capacity? My recollection is it might be 3301 Kerner, but I'd love to understand how are we expanding our capacity?
Yes, Vice Mayor Hill, that is correct. 3301 Kerner is the next big permanent supportive housing project, big for us at least, with 43 units that will be opening and serving chronically homeless individuals in housing with services. It is expected to be opening in January of 2025. That will absolutely make a really great impact on this situation. But 43 units is not, I mean, we have a great deal more individuals that are homeless in the city, of course, than that. So we need more of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead with comments. I don't think there are any other questions. So go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Well, first, thank you, Assistant Community Development Director Hess, and thank you, Assistant City Attorney Foyle, for navigating us through this ordinance tonight. I think that the, the most important thing to me is that this ordinance is not the focus of where we want to be focused on. I think we would all be prefer, we'd all prefer that we are talking about how, how are we creating more opportunities for people to exist with dignity in, in our community. The incidence of homelessness has wide-ranging impact, not just, of course, on the, on the folks who are experiencing homelessness, but on the community. I've shared before my family history that my father and his brother were homeless as children for a year. They lived on a beach in Washington State. This experience was largely kept as something as a point of shame for my father for many years. And only recently has he's embraced this part of his history as a survivor and something that he had to work through. This is something that is very important to me personally, that we resolve the, our overall crisis. This is an issue that goes well beyond San Rafael. And, you know, I, I take Jason Saris's comment about, you know, I hope that the city will not criminalize people once, you know, whatever happens with the Supreme Court. And I, I appreciate your prompt, Jason, because this council member does not think that we would criminalize people for being homeless. However, I do also think that in some future where we could work better together, we can find more cohesive experiences for everyone in our community. You know, if, I think we would all in this room push a button and have more housing built as we navigate the economics of what that has taken, you know, even just citing 3301 Kerner. This has taken many, many years. I was a planning commissioner when that was approved. And this is going back to 2020. And it is still, you know, still just, just under a year away and, and I pray for that to come online. And as you, and as we think about 43 units and it's so precious, it pales in comparison to the number, the, the amount of need that we have. So I think, you know, while I am going to support this ordinance, this is not the, this is a, a, a small measure to create, I think, more safety and operate something that can work. I think the original ordinance became unworkable as we went through this process with our judicial officer. And while I appreciate every person's commitment from staff and I'm looking, people who aren't sitting on the, across in the dais today are folks in San Rafael Police Department, folks in San Rafael Fire Department, public works who have done many heroic acts to help support our community as we've navigated this issue. I, I am looking forward to better days ahead and, and look forward to finding every way we can bring better resolution to people and bring more dignity to our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Bushy, how about you?
I support that this needed pivot. We need to find a way to bring some sense of order and, and help the residents in these areas find their footing and get into the treatment that they need. I think this is part of the solution to, to move towards a, 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 a permanent type of housing, but that we need to do this more comprehensively. This is just one tool of things that need to happen to bring the encouragement, the nudges that to help these members of our community find the treatment that they need to find their way to a more productive way of living in San Rafael. So I support this proposal and support the broader actions that the city needs to take to, to advance the interests of our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuren Skolari.
Yes, thank you. I, I think Director Strollia from San Rafael Chamber, you mentioned humanitarian crisis and I agree. It's really painful to see people living in those conditions. And when I think about like, okay, 3301 Kerner, 43 units, but it's county. So that means that it could be anybody from the county. There is a priority list. Thinking about home war bond, okay, there is more units in there. So like, we need more housing, we need more services. So I think the city is definitely doing the, the right thing. I think the services that we are offering are amazing. The collaboration that you're always looking, you know, working with the county, working with nonprofits. The, you know, Mahone Creek, Anderson Drive is my corner, is my neighborhood. Like if you ask like a council member to go and walk around there, it's like, I go there, like I drive by. I, I walk there like every day. I see it. We have also like a lot of businesses that they are trying to make a living and it's extremely hard when customers are not coming and they have to. and they have to close down. And it really, that also affects our entire city. Or when you have people that they are working extremely hard for their families and their kids cannot even go in that area, you know? Or somebody that cannot even go biking on Anderson Drive because there's just like stuff in there. So it's a very challenging situation. I think this is, again, a tool that we can use and see, you know, how it will work. I do believe that we are all the same community, and we have to work together. And so, yeah, so I will definitely endorse this, knowing that it is not going to solve the problem, you know? And it's, I guess, another step, hoping that we can do more and advocate more. And to share, you know, because I feel the city of San Rafael compared to Marin County is taking a lot, a lot of the issue, you know? And I must say, my district is one, we are taking a lot, you know, of that issue as well on District One. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
I'd also like to extend my thanks to the team who's worked on this. This is just one piece of the big puzzle that we're working on. Also to Mel and to Lynn Murphy from the San Rafael Police Department. We were a team during the point-in-time count, 5:00 AM, going out and counting. And we did walk through the Mahone area and around the whole area to do the count. So, and it is something that I see all the time. I try to make an effort to walk the area at least once a week. I'd also like to thank those with lived experience and working with the city in that collaboration. I've worked on homelessness issues for almost 20 years, I think. And this is, it's more unique now than it ever has been to have those conversations and know that your voice is very important at the table with Chris and with John and with Christine. I mean, it has been very helpful. And you're also not only working with staff, that's important, but also working with those living outside and helping to communicate what you're seeing and hearing and helping us as well. So I appreciate that. I'm going to continue working on homeless issues until we solve it. And whether that, you know, it's a combination of case management, it's supportive housing, and it's interim, having interim housing solution. And we will continue working on that together. We sit on boards together, and so we'll continue working on those solutions. But as a homeowner, as a renter, as somebody who goes as a guest to someone's house, there's rules. There's just rules that we have to follow, and we have to establish rules now around for those who are sheltering in public property. We haven't had those rules before. We're putting rules in place. And so everyone has, I mean, we live in a society, we live in a community. These type of rules are important. And I do really appreciate your feedback and your comments and your support of the fact that we do need to move this direction. So thank you. And it really does come down to an issue of safety and security for the unsheltered community as well for the public and for the business community. So I think it's moving in the right direction, and I'm happy to support the motion.
Well, as always, thank you for all of your comments. And I was reflecting that our city manager, Ililovich, her opening comments, she talked about productive problem solving and that we're in this together, and that productive problem solving has been done with the plaintiffs and with people that are in this room. And I am really grateful for staff and for the folks that were willing to get in those conversations. And what's before us tonight is very much based on those conversations and Judge Chen's guidance. That's what is in front of us, that that guidance came from input from staff and from the plaintiffs. That's what has been created for us this evening. And another thing you talked about, that Christine had said, was talking about the centering the needs of the unhoused. We've already demonstrated that we've done that. We are the only city in Marin County that has a mental health crisis team. We're the only city. And so we are the only city that has a mental health liaison, Lynn Murphy, embedded with the police department. We're the only one. We did that, we started that, I don't know, 10 years ago. So we have shown over time, we had a sanctioned encampment, the service support area, that now 70-plus percent, two-thirds, have been housed. We have shown, this isn't about tonight. This is about all the acts that we have done over the last decade. And that we have been showing up in collaboration, in partnership, to add another piece of this really big, complex puzzle. And I think we all agree that encampments aren't good for the occupants, they're not good for the surrounding community. We have a shared goal of permanent supportive housing. So I just want to close by saying that. That is what, this is a piece for that, but it's not, as you heard my colleagues say, this is not the end. This is part of a very long conversation. So I have gratitude for everyone who's been a part of that, who's informed what's in front of us tonight. And I know that this will go a long way to really supporting the folks that are unhoused in our community as we work together to get people into permanent supportive housing. And I welcome, my colleagues have been showing their willingness to roll up their sleeve, as has staff, and I know will continue to stay committed. So thank you for bringing this forward this evening and to the point where I would appreciate a motion on this item. Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz. Go ahead.
Okay. Ordinance regulating camping on public property. Recommended action: Introduce ordinance, waive further reading of ordinance, and refer to it by title only.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy. Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yuranez Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. I request that the city clerk read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Centerfell amending chapter 19.50 to the Centerfell Municipal Code entitled Camping on Public Property, regulating camping on public property within the city of Centerfell.
Thank you. We have one other agenda item, and that is the 7A. We're going to authorize affordable, we're going to consider authorizing Affordable Housing Trust Fund award to include renovation of units and an additional building at Marin Villa Estates. Welcome. Thank you, Seth.
I know. Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Mel Burnett, Housing and Homelessness Analyst in the Community and Economic Development Department. And I'm presenting for your consideration an amendment to Resolution 15244, authorizing the use of previously awarded Affordable Housing Trust Funds for the renovation of units in an additional building at Marin Villa Estates. Canal Alliance owns 12 affordable rental units in the three buildings at Marin Villa Estates in San Rafael's Canal neighborhood. These buildings, these building addresses are 153, 161, and 165 Novato Street, and the units within them have not been updated in over 20 years. In 2023, Canal Alliance applied for a $400,000 grant from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund to renovate units in 161 and 165 Novato Street. City Council authorized a grant of $200,000 from the Housing in Lufi Fund for this project. City Council's original authorization of funds was only for buildings 161 and 165 Novato Street. Canal Alliance now requests to instead use the awarded funds to renovate three units located in their third building at Marin Villa Estates, which is 153 Novato Street. The units at 153 Novato Street are equally in need of renovation and are deed restricted for households earning very low or low income. Canal Alliance's request does not seek additional funds for the proposed renovations, but proposes renovating three units instead of four, considering increased per-unit expenditures due to rises in material and labor costs, including the application of prevailing wage requirements and, in addition, asbestos inspection and abatement costs. The proposed use of funds would help preserve affordable housing and meets the evaluation criteria for the notice of funding availability and the city's guidelines for the administration of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The project remains consistent with the city's housing element goals to ensure habitability, maintenance, and a diverse range of housing options throughout the city. Tonight, staff recommends that city council adopt the resolution to amend Resolution 15244 to authorize the use of funds for renovating units and an additional building at Marin Villa Estates. And we're available for any questions that you'd like.
Thank you, Mel. Any questions? Oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes. So can you clarify? I think you said this, but I just wanted, for full clarification, that none of the funds awarded have been used at all yet for 161 and 165.
Correct. So none of the awarded funds will be applied to the renovations of 161 or 165 Novato Street. Canal Alliance sought and received other non-trust fund dollars for the renovation of 153 Novato Street. However, the amount is not enough, especially given the increases in per-unit costs. So therefore, Canal Alliance is requesting to use funds from San Rafael's Affordable Housing Trust Fund to fully cover the renovation of the 153 Novato Street units.
Thank you. And also, just to clarify, the fact is is that we're operating inside of the guidelines of our, of the trust fund. And this is why it goes before council, because we want to make sure the public can understand that we're not just moving money around at our, at staff's kind of arbitrary discretion, that we're actually following the rules of our trust fund. Is that right?
Exactly, to stay within that criterion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, not seen any questions. I'll open this agenda item for public comment. Hi, Yolanda.
Hello. Hi, everyone. Thank you for staying this late.
Thank you.
Thank you, all staff. I just want to extend my gratitude to Alexis and Mel and everyone who's been supporting me in this. They've been very helpful in answering all of my questions. And just to kind of, just give a little bit of overview of, you know, why this is important for us is as Canal Alliance is trying to acquire more properties in Marin County, we want to make sure that we build a model of where our properties are going to do, look like. And so one of the things that we're trying to do is, we've owned these units for 20 years. They haven't been rehabbed, and we really want to make them habitable for our tenants. And because that's what, that's what essentially our model's going to be as we move forward and acquire more units, because we want to make sure that people aren't just given, you know, aren't provided with affordable or low-cost housing, but also just, you know, just beautiful units that they can feel comfortable and live in. So that's essentially why we're working on this project. And there may be future requests. But I just wanted to kind of clarify that. And yeah, so this is what we're working on, and we're excited. One of the biggest costs, too, is the relocation of tenants. And, you know, it's a huge cost. And so those are things that we did not consider. And we want to make sure that we follow all regulations to make sure that we accommodate tenants in the process of doing this and that, you know, we're following all the laws that need to be followed. So thank you for your consideration, and yeah.
Thank you. Thank you to Canal Alliance for going into this area of landlords. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Not seen anyone, I'll close the public comment. And unless there are additional questions, I would entertain a motion on this item.
If you can make one comment?
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So just quoting Omar Carrera from earlier this evening, he talked about protection, production, preservation. Every dollar in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is precious. And we still continue to support Canal Alliance's pursuit to, in this case, preserve. And so thank you for advocating and encumbering these funds and put them to good use. Thank you.
Well said. Why don't, you want to make a motion? It's part of your...
Yes. I move that we adopt the resolution amending Resolution 15244 to authorize the use of $200,000 in funds from the Affordable Housing in Lufi Fund, Fund 243, for the renovation of three units at 153 Novato Street in Marin Villa Estates.
And I'll second. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yuranez Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mel. Thank you for Alexis. Thank you, Yolanda. The last item of the evening is open time for public expression. This is the time the community can comment on anything not on tonight's robust agenda. We are here to listen. Not seen anyone, I'm going to close the public comment and adjourn the meeting. Good night, everyone.